Just a couple of minutes after seven, I'd like to call this meeting on the Board of Selectment to order. Could I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any Watkins this evening? Good evening.
Evening, thank you. Anne Burbine, Tenpenny Crest Road, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Just to let everyone know that we are having a visioning of Green Bush at the Situate Maritime Building on Saturday from nine to one. And I know it's going to be an absolutely exquisite day and is also our town election, but if you can possibly come and give us some pointers, what you want to see in Green Bush, what you don't want to see, I mean, this is the time. We want to plan, we don't want to have to react. So, please, all are welcome. Thank you.
Can you give the time again, Anne?
Nine to one. Maritime Center.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Do we have any more Watkins this evening? Yes, sir.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm going to read you a brief statement. I know you have a busy schedule, so I'll read it rather than blabber on. "I thought it was an appropriate time to bring awareness to the Board of the sentiment across the vast majority of Situate residents, both senior and otherwise, to continue to move forward with a permanent facility to serve the social, educational, artistic, and health needs of a growing segment of our population. All current Board members have expressed this need as a priority. We hope that as the makeup of the Board changes, it will continue to be a priority. The senior voting population is unified in having a Board that will support efforts for a permanent facility, much in the same way that a permanent solution were found to address needs for schools, police, fire, and library projects." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more Watkins this evening? Will move on to the report of the Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of announcements and plugs. First of all, we are having another opportunity to host students and individuals from Soucy-en-Brie, our sister city in France, and we really could use the community's help in identifying 12 host families. And I really wanted to put a shout out for our committee and to members of the community to be in touch with Pat Jacart if they're interested. He'll be here from July 9th to July 23rd, and it will be a really, one of the funding building principles, guiding principles of our sister city relationship is to have folks go back and forth there and exchange a lot of the wonderful things between our country and theirs. But I understand that we do have a shortage of the 12 host families that we need, and if folks want to consider that again from July 9th through July 23rd, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ruth, can you get that in the paper?
I have to talk to Ruth. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Pat, do you have anything you want to add at all?
No, just I'm very grateful to the town. I say no, but yes. I am very grateful for the town. You've always stepped up, everybody has, to host when we've had students come, and every single person that's hosted, French students in the last 10 years, has really come away from the experience, loving it. We just had students from another area, another town in the Paris area in April, and there were several students going over this, from Situate High School, going over this summer, and including our Pitya group, Megan McConaughey who's going. And so it's really an eye-opener, it's a learning experience, but it's just so rewarding, and it's really something that puts you on a new path for life. So I appreciate anyone that could host, we really appreciate it. There was also one chaperone that needs hosting, and she speaks three languages: Italian, Italian.
We speak it in my house all the time.
And English and French. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
The second announcement I want to make is that we're having a Situate Affordable Housing Trust is having an affordable housing lottery for two affordable homes for sale at 11 Nelson Road and 163 Stockbridge Road. There's going to be two public information sessions held about these properties, Thursday, May 18th at 6:30 and Saturday, May 20th at 10:30 a.m., and they will be held at the Situate Housing Authority Community Room. We have already posted and blasted some of these on our website and Facebook page, but two opportunities to provide housing or purchase them, so wanted to do that. And then the only other thing I wanted to report, because I know you have a lengthy agenda, is we had 125 people over three tours come through the public safety complex on Saturday, and the feedback I received from the police and fire deputies was that it was very positive from our residents. There is another one tomorrow, but pre-registration is required, and you can contact the police department for that.
That's all. As a public hearing, do I need to wait until that?
If there is a certain time, you might have to.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to Don Knapp real quick. If you don't mind, Don.
I don't know if we can do that, because we have to post the public hearing in the paper.
That's what I'm saying. It's too early, we've got five minutes, but that's about what he's gonna take.
Okay, sorry, Don Knapp.
No problem.
My apologies.
No problem. How are you, sir?
Great, thank you. It's that time of year again, our annual Memorial Day observance will be May 29th. Again, the ceremonies will start off with the flotilla out of the master's office for the placing of the reef for those lost at sea, and then at 9:45 up at the VFW Post, they have their own ceremony and on a guy going on. And then what we'll do is we have, everyone's not forming up here in front of the Town Hall between 10 and 10:30, and to step off on, at 10:30 shop, a parade going up First Parish to the Common, and then the ceremony up there will start around 11:15, as soon as we get everybody up there. This year's guest speaker is retired Major, excuse me, John Billieu, U.S. Marine Corps. And then this year also, we have the project 351, an eighth grader, who will be the ambassador for, Governor Baker has a Memorial Day proclamation, and she was chosen locally from the eighth graders to read that. So she'll be reading that for us, too.
Excellent. Well, I'll certainly be there, so.
We look forward to that.
All right.
And.
Make some water, okay?
Yeah, we. Just in case, last year, obviously, unfortunately, ran into inclement weather, we moved it over to the Gahr Hall. That, right now, will be the inclement weather protocol. If it's, the parades canceled, we will meet at 11 o'clock at Gahr Hall.
Same, same, okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, now we're gonna move to a public hearing for Untold Brewing LLC, Matt Elder. How are you? And discuss a vote, the Farmer Series Pouring Permit, malt liquor license, as well as the Common Vicular and the entertainment license as well. How are you, sir?
Hi, good.
Just tell us a little bit about what you're doing and what you want to do, and...
Sure, so the name of the brewery is Untold Brewing. My name's Matt Elder, I'm the founder and brewer, and located at Six Old Country Way. We're building from the ground up and reusing an old schoolhouse from the town as our taproom. So we've completed our federal permitting, our state permitting so far, and now we're going for our local permits to allow us to serve pours through the taproom larger than one ounce, so people can hang out and enjoy themselves.
Can you just describe what it's gonna look like and what, you know, we hear a lot of rumors on what it's actually gonna be and what it's gonna serve, can you just solidify that a little bit for me?
Of course, yeah. So we have a 4,200 square foot production facility in the back, and then attached through a breezeway is the old schoolhouse, the South Main Street School, that's been renovated and sort of salvaged. It was just a, you know, kind of a dumpy storage facility before, but we're totally bringing it back to life next to our talented landlord. It's about 800 square feet, it'll have bathrooms, but we're sort of restoring the inside to really, it's really, you know, appeal to the history of the town and the history of that building, kind of make it more of an interactive environment, you know, that people can enjoy. So it's definitely gonna have some history behind it and talk to sort of the history of the town. We'll be serving beer through the bar area, which is in the production building, and then inviting people to kind of hang out in the schoolhouse and drink there.
So you'll be pouring in the production, will there be a bar in the schoolhouse?
There won't be a bar in the schoolhouse, that'll be seating only. So the idea is to have people enter through the breezeway, go into the bar area, get the drinks that they want, and then hang out on, either there's an outdoor patio next to the schoolhouse, and also hang out inside the schoolhouse itself.
So you'll have tables?
We will, yeah. Community-style seating, I want people to sit with each other and talk and get to know one another, so, yeah. I think right now we're looking at just like, yeah, community, like picnic table-type seating, but.
And what about food?
We won't be preparing any food or serving any food, other than just prepackaged snacks, where we're looking at pretzels, chips, you know, things that we don't have to handle ourselves, we can hand out, so people can snack on something while they enjoy our beer. And we're allowing people to bring food with them, sort of BYOF, if you will. We've talked to other local restaurants, and they're totally on board. Some have even offered to give us, you know, a dedicated delivery driver if we want, so, yeah, it's just, you know, we're not food people, we're beer people, so we'll focus on that and let the other kind of great restaurants in the area do the food.
Great, so, just, so other restaurants, you're gonna be able to order from other restaurants there, or you can bring whatever you want in?
Bring food with you, you can, well, we'll have a list of local restaurants and phone numbers and, you know, probably shortened menus that you can call and have a delivery made right to the brewery, right to the taproom.
Bless you. Great idea.
Thanks.
When's it gonna open?
We're, I think realistically looking at September right now. That's the goal. I think we're on track, if things stay on track right now, September's a very realistic goal. Hopefully sooner, though.
No, it looks really nice. Chick, you're here, I know, but Chick's done a great job on the whole project. I have taken a tour of the schoolhouse and the brewery, or the, as you could say, the warehouse component, and it's impeccable. It's really nice. Doing a great job.
Thank you. How many stools will there be, and how much should you say they'll pour, and how long can someone stay as long as they want?
So the capacity is about 49 is what we've capped it at.
Okay.
And then they can stay as long as they want. We're doing, we're not doing pints, we're doing smaller pours, we're doing a taster tray, where you can get four or five ounce pours and different beers, you can mix and match, or we're doing 10 ounce pours, if you just want a single beer for yourself. We'll do, you know, 20 ounces per person at a time.
Okay. All right. In the patio out front or in the back?
Patio is in the front on the side of the schoolhouse.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a beautiful stone wall, it looks pretty aside.
I haven't seen it, yeah.
Here's the front. It's a stone wall all the way around.
It's enclosed.
Do you want to start with the first?
See if anyone else has questions?
Anybody in the audience have any questions at all? We'll start with the...
Trying to get back to the motion.
Please, just for the permit, the liquor permit, pouring permit?
There it is. Is that the first? I'll move to approve the application for a new Farmer Series Pouring Permit malt license to Untold Brewery LLC, Situate, Mass. Excuse me, the premises is located at Six Old Country Way, Situate, which consists of 5,665 square feet of indoor space. The indoor space includes two floors. The three-room first floor is, the three-room first floor, is it three rooms? Is that the, is that the school?
Two bathrooms and...
That must be it. The three-room first floor is 5,265 square feet, and the one-room second floor is 400 square feet room. The patio deck outdoor area consists of 472 square feet, and the liquor license hours are Monday through Thursday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 p.m., and Sunday, 10 a.m. until 8 p.m.
Second.
Question?
That's what I thought.
Wait for the motion.
Okay.
So, second?
Okay. Second by Mr. Vignani. So I have a question, so it's actually Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., correct?
Sunday, it's from 10 a.m. till...
So Friday's Saturday.
Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Is that what I said? Did I say that? I thought I did. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. All those in favor?
Well, I think...
Questions, Chick?
There's only one floor.
Yeah, I thought the...
So the 400 square feet doesn't exist on the second floor, Chick?
No, that was only...
Oh, okay. Just want to...
This is what was in put in the liquor license application.
Okay. Strike.
All right, so I'll move to strike the patio, which one is it?
400 square feet on the second floor.
The 470 square feet, right here.
That's the outdoor patio.
Oh, what? Oh, the three-room?
The 400 square feet, second floor, 400 square feet.
Second floor is 400 square feet, where is that? Oh, right here, I see it, okay. And the one-room, I'll strike the one-room second floor, 400 square feet, all right, from the motion. Thank you. Second, somebody second that?
Tony did. Second, sorry?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now back to the original motion, which is now amended. You have to do it again. I moved to strike it, so I struck it. We just ordered on it. Now we have to move to the final.
Move to accept the final motion? Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got that under the line. All right, so move on to...
The entertainment purpose? So what are you thinking for entertainment?
Just light entertainment, we're thinking occasionally maybe we've had a couple, you know, singer-songwriters or duets reach out wanting to know if we were gonna have, you know, guitar playing or light music in the taproom, so we thought to be a good idea, and that's sort of the...
It says DJ amplified music.
Thought if we had special events and someone requested DJs to sort of keep our options open, I don't, that wouldn't be a regular occurrence, that would be, I would say, you know, one-off.
So that'd be amplified, but that would be inside only?
Inside only, yeah.
So what do you think, it's kind of a residential, well, it's kind of a commercial here. How many houses are over there, other than you? Couple?
Down Jenkins, right.
Have you spoken to them about it? The neighbors?
Sent out a notification of the butters. Didn't get into more detail on what we're discussing.
Anyone here that's a butter?
Is that a deal breaker if I, Matt, could you try it without it? I, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I don't live in the area, and I'm just afraid that someone might not know about it, and...
We'd be willing to strike the DJ, and again, that would be sort of a special request thing, that wouldn't, nothing I would do.
I want to help you any way I can, I just, you know, just, you know, maybe, just kind of take steps, that's all I... Chick, can I recognize, you know, Chick Fagan, you know, any thoughts? Have you spoken to the neighbors or anything?
Not really, you know, they haven't shown a lot, you know, they just can't wait to go, but I think amplified music, as long as it's inside, you know, DJ stuff like that outside, because it is an excuse, it's residential and business, and that's a polite area at Green Bush, and overly disparate, which I'm all for, and that's why I've done this project to show that it can work. And I think Mass can do a great job, and we want to pay them, and that's kind of where I stand on that, but, yeah, I think as long as it's inside, it can be, you know, a neighbor and happens a lot. I want to keep it as an entertainment.
I think we could go the other way, too, Sean, is try it, you know?
Okay, sure.
As it is, and see, make sure, if there are complaints, we would have to deal with them, obviously.
Yeah, and we'd be very accommodating if anyone ever did complain, of course.
So I think that that would work, you know? All right? Could I have a motion?
Well, let's talk about the hours for one second. So 11 to 11 for, on Monday through Thursday?
Yep.
The sort of the reasoning behind that, I really don't see a stain up until 11 during the week, it was more for...
I was thinking in the morning, John's gonna be trying to make money across the street, and you're gonna be jamming a cameo.
But the outdoors is closed, they don't...
The reason for that, you know, people on their way to a lunch or something sometimes like to pick up beer to go on the way, so...
Oh, I'm talking about entertainment. I don't care about the drinking.
Oh, for the entertainment side.
John will be there. So, do you think you need entertainment starting at 11 in the morning during the week?
Probably not, I think those, I just copied over the hours from the other, yeah.
What do you guys think? What time do we usually start the entertainment?
Most of the 12.
No, beginning.
Yeah, 12, 8, 7, no, right.
Really?
Right.
Sometimes you use it, I mean, you want to be able to give them the ability if they have something going on.
I guess 4th of July or something.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean he's gonna do it, because...
I think if it becomes a problem, you'll hear about it, Matt.
Yeah.
It's chicks. So, I think, you know, that's, see how it goes, that's all.
Hearing from my office.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve an entertainment permit for Untold Brewing LLC, Situate, Massachusetts, the indoor entertainment for a three-piece band, DJ, amplified music, Monday through Thursday from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., and Sunday from 10 a.m. until 8 p.m. And an outdoor entertainment for an acoustic guitar, Monday through Thursday from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., Friday and Saturday from 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., and Sunday from 10 a.m. until 8 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danigh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Lastly?
The Common Vicular, yeah?
Move to approve a Common Vicular license for Untold Brewing LLC, located at Six Old Country Way, Situate, Massachusetts, pending Board of Health approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danigh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Can't wait for you to open.
Very much, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Move on to a discussion of vote, GB, I mean JBNJ Foods Incorporated liquor license and Common Vic change of DBA from Tedeschi's to 7-Eleven? How are you, sir?
Hi, how are you?
Just tell us your names and...
Yep, Brian Gilmet, I'm the franchisee of the 7-Eleven in Situate there.
All right.
I'm Scott Estrel, I'm the representative from 7-Eleven Incorporated.
Just tell us, I mean, it's pretty much a straightforward thing.
Yeah, Tedeschi's sold 7-Eleven two years ago, and we just remodeled, just changed in the name. Corporation's still the same, employees is still the same.
Okay. So being a former district manager, just curious what you're actually gonna bring in? Are you gonna do hot foods in there or anything, or you're doing, what are you gonna be doing?
We have, yeah.
Yeah, hot food, Slurpee, it's been crazy with the teenagers in there with the Slurpee and stuff.
Excellent.
So you've been running it for the last...
Eight years now.
Eight years, okay. And I heard, are you making pizza?
Yes.
Popular?
Yes, pizza, hot dogs, chicken wings, everything.
My kids were raving about the pizza, so...
It almost went like viral, we were closed for 18 days, and as soon as we opened, it was, it was a hit, yeah.
It's pretty amazing, yeah.
It's gonna be the same, 24 hours?
Yep.
So the only thing I'd reiterate, like we do, is the liquor, you know?
Just be careful, down the alcohol, sales to minors or anything, just make sure.
You have the license, what's the name of that system?
Scanning system.
Scanning, yeah, we can scan IDs, we ID onto 40, we're overly strict and very, always training, always hands-on, I'm always there, myself, so...
So that's the only thing that could really...
Yeah, we take it very serious, so...
So if I could speak to that for just a second, so it's mandatory that each employee conduct computer-based training. The registers are set up in such a way that they have to enter a birth date, or they can actually scan the ID on the register, so, as a further safeguard, but traditionally, they won't get on the register until they've gone through the training, which includes sale of restricted products.
Well, just, there was another place in town that had that also, and the kids learned just to put a date in there, and it, so, scan the IDs and make sure, I mean, there's stings that we hold all the time, and the ABCC does them as well, so just make sure you're vigilant with that, and...
Yep.
Motion?
Yeah, please. Move to approve a Common Vicular license for JBNJ Foods, Inc., doing business as 7-Eleven, number 37474A, located at 337 Gannett Road, Situate, Mass.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to approve the JBNJ Food, Inc., package store wine and malt liquor license, doing business as 7-Eleven, number 37474A, pending approval of the ABCC.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, welcome to town and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Running a little bit ahead, we have...
John, come on down.
Discussion of vote, SCTV Equipment Award contract, John Rose and Al Banker.
Yeah, I couldn't be here, but...
Okay.
You're not gonna be here much longer either, is that what I hear?
I will not, I will not.
When's your last day?
June 2nd.
Wow, California, huh?
California. Been several years that I've been coming in, and the greatest news, the best news is probably the tonight's news, which is, the signal's been analog here since I've been here, and, you know, hence the problems and the 80's technology and the modulators that are literally 40 years old. And as part of the new contractor, just kind of in tandem with it, we're gonna hopefully take some funds from the cable fund and get these guys to take the existing equipment and bring in some technology that will allow us to go digital, which will be great. It's like the best news for SCTV, just like it will look like every other station, and HD, and it will, like, you could, there's all kinds of cloud capabilities, which will mean that there might be some on-demand viewing, instead of, you know, kind of not being even able to record these meetings and having to see them online. Hopefully, this will be a game changer, so...
So the incident that had happened probably about a month ago, when we couldn't have anything taped and filmed, that we couldn't pick up the tape, that's all gonna be gone away, there was a reasoning?
Yes, that's like the tree basically down the cable, but this is gonna be attached to the fiber lines, so there'll be, there is a I, what they call an I-net, I believe, cable that goes from here to the head end of Weymouth, that the cable kind of piggybacks on, it has been doing for several years. It's just, this is great, this company's done this, you know, a lot in the past, and they actually came down, talked to me, talked to Al, talked to the Comcast guys, and they're gonna be doing a lot of work to take the existing kind of system and equipment, and whatever they can kind of keep, or whatever that can be salvaged will be kept, but then these new, they're called blades, I think they're really the primary cost driver here. It's like there's the Nexus Blade, each of them are $8,000, and there's three of them for the three channels. But this is like the greatest, like, thing. You know, we work hard to get the programming and record the meetings and the events, and this will allow it to look normal, like any other channel, so...
So it'll make me look younger and thinner?
Exactly. The thinning app will kick in and everybody will look much, no, you know, I, I just, this is just the great, it's great timing as well, it's like, kind of like...
We're getting all the stuff and you're leaving us, John, I'm like...
Well, I feel like it's like we got this thing going and you guys supported this thing and, you know, Tony remembers like from the very beginning and now it's gonna look great and, you know, we're gonna have maybe some fresh eyes in here too and, you know, that's great. That's great news. I mean, I, I'm very happy to have been able to do it and thank you all for supporting it.
Well, you can check it out on YouTube and see the quality, right?
Right. Well, actually, yeah, and hopefully I'll be able to check out some on-demand stuff, which would be, which would be a great new thing as well.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Sir John, thank you for building the KMS studio over-
Is this a motion?
Yeah.
You're sort of setting a precedent here, because most of our department has almost every single one but one since you has retired and you're actually leaving, heading west, young man, so.
You're doing that.
Everybody's sad to see you go and wanna thank you for the programming and bringing our meetings, many boards and committees into people's homes so they can see how the town operates and you've done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking.
Yeah, you've been, you've been great, I have to say.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback. John, remember the first meetings with Bill August here going over how much we're gonna get paid from Comcast?
Uh-huh.
And what equipment we're gonna need and you've really taken something that was really a bit of a pipe dream to, to reality, so I thank you for all your effort. You've put a ton of hours into this. You've helped kids at the school. You've brought sporting events to the town and some old-time movies also, but you've really worked hard and really made something of this channel and I wanna thank you personally for it.
Thanks.
And best of luck in California.
Thank you very much. Send you guys cards on the road.
We'll hold you to it. We'll hold you to it.
We want a motion for this.
I have it here if you want. Move the board's Selectment Award contract for the design, procurement, and installation of digital broadcast channel upgrades. The contract number is 17-CTV-24 to HB Communications of Waltham, Massachusetts, in the amount of $72,528 as specified in their quotation dated May 8th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
John, thanks. We'll see you around the next couple of weeks anyway, so.
Yeah.
After graduation, that's the last year.
Moving on to a discussion of vote of the date for the special town election.
What, Kathy, the clerk?
Please, Kathy, do mine.
No, cut off.
How are you this evening?
I'm fine, gentlemen. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, you, I heard talk that it might be September you're thinking of?
We've been talking about it. I think we're thinking after the summer because everyone's so busy in the summer and, is that what?
Yeah, I thought we'd wait until September. One is because you get into, June is too soon, July, people are away and August is a bad month and then school starts and then I would think shortly thereafter, within probably two weeks, would be a good opportunity to set up for everybody to get serious and people who wanna pull papers will pull, start campaigning through the summer, get people and then they're there.
So, what are those dates?
Forty-nine days before the election is when nomination papers are due back to the Board of Registrazione, which is me.
Okay.
Okay? Fifteen days prior to that date is when I need written notification that you voted to have a special election, which obviously we're plenty of time for September. So, the 49 days is key because that's the nomination paper deadline, okay?
Sixty-five days.
So, if we're looking, I, I, if you wanna come up with a couple of dates, I can suggest a couple. The 9th of September, it's the first week of school, the first full week of completed school. I don't know what that does, but gives them time to adjust, to get acclimated, especially with the new schedule and buses and all that, whatever. It's on a Saturday, so it's not gonna interfere with school, but as far as food services, getting set up and organized and getting orders in, I will preorder meals, obviously, before summer ends if we decide on a date for the election workers, so that's not an issue and I will also book the gym on whatever you vote on. I will not be available the last weekend in September. I have planned a short five-day vacation. I'll be out of state and, so my recommendation would be, the best scenario would be the 20, the, excuse me, the 16th. That way it gives me plenty of time to prep, nomination papers, all that stuff and as far as the week before, I have full staff for processing as the election commissioner and being in charge of setting it all up and getting all the paperwork and all that stuff prepped for the workers. The 23rd is also doable, although that leaves me a tight timeframe to certify it before I go away. Not a big deal, I can clean up an election in a day and a half, two days, so. The only problem that leaves that, if you do it on the 23rd, if the race is close and somebody asks for a recount, I can't, you know, I don't have it in front of me, I wish I brought it now that I, in hindsight, the rules on a recount, how long somebody, you have to get a petition for a recount and I know there's a timeframe when the recount has to occur and I don't have that off the top of my head. So, that, taking in the after-effects of an election, especially if it's close, and those dates is something to consider as well if the election commissioner is out of town. So, that's all I'm saying. But I'd be happy with either the 16th and the 23rd and the sooner the better because there is also the other possibility of a petition to have a special sooner. But this, this dates, these, this month that you're considering is probably perfect as far as that 49-day deadline and then the two weeks prior to that deadline for you to notify me, so, you know, a petition has the same rules, basically. You know, there are still the deadlines stay intact, so to get a petition going and 200 signatures and all that, it's just unlikely, so.
Where would you hold the election?
Same, Saturday at the high school.
So-
The gym.
Saturdays, there's a ton of football games and stuff going on here. Is there, is there a chance to have it maybe at the new Gates Gym and have parking in the front?
To change, to change the venue of an election is not something that can be done. It takes like over 100 days to do that. It's very complicated. It's not something that can be done on a whim and then move it back to its original location. Are you talking about the old Gates? Are you talking about the new one right here?
No, the new, the new.
Because I don't know the setup and everything, I don't know-
Firsthand.
I'd still be booking the school, the fields.
What's that?
I still have to book the field. I booked, when we booked the gym for elections, okay, and this is election law, that's not something that I, just because, you cannot obstruct the access to the polls from the voter. In other words, we keep traffic flowing with the detail if we need it and all that, so that means booking the whole property, basically. The fields cannot be used and that is to cut down on traffic and it's a safety issue. So, whether it's at Gates Auditorium, which would be a nightmare to try to set that up now, or whether it's at the gym, excuse me, or whether it's at the Situate High School gym, the fact remains the same that the property is 606 or 5, whatever the new address is gonna be, and the fields around it are part of the booking of the election venue.
That's interesting.
And it's a safety issue. It's, think about it.
But realistically, if you're, if you're taking the, if you're coming over here with the entrance is over here and you have all the parking in front-
If they wanna use the tennis courts, that's fine, as long as they're not using the side parking lot where people are protesting, listen to me, politicking, campaigning, or in protesting, the left parking-
I'm talking in the back. Like, if people, they play on the turf in the back, if you add it in the front, then you could park people in the front.
But I still have foot traffic of kids going back when voters are exiting and entering the polls and they're gonna try to use the locker rooms and they're gonna try to use the restrooms and those are for voters and then I'm gonna have to worry about kids cutting through. It's always been an issue having it, wherever you have it, it's never a good place. It is what it is, unfortunately. I did allow, there's a game or a practice or, I think it's a game, Saturday night, starting at 5:00. And the only reason I allowed that was, number one, I thought I could get the poll hours till 5:00 and after that, there's no voters, but they're extended till 6:00. I promised that they could use it. They're parking at-
Cushing?
Cushing and walking down and the kids are walking down and I have it that they won't be using the locker rooms or the restrooms or anything like that. I won't do that again, though, because it, I don't know why I bent to that, but I thought the poll hours would be shorter, I think.
Well, we have parking here now, too.
We do have parking here.
Or sports teams or whatever, I mean, so you'd have access to the poles of the gym, but we have, you know, we could direct some teams to park here.
We could, but if they're using the back fields, where, how do they get to those fields?
Well, they might have to walk further.
That's what, that's my point.
But, I mean, this building's empty, so there's plenty of parking, people-
Yeah, it's not the parking, it's also the foot traffic of students while voters and politicians as well are entering and exiting the polls with the traffic, safety issue. That's my concern, is students walking behind somebody elderly or anybody that's come to vote and backing out the car while a student is talking to their friend and not, they're not paying attention. I just don't, I wanna avoid any issues on Election Day, any issues, with safety. Safety's number one.
Is that remedy, Kathy, by extra details at all?
Um, it, that would help, obviously, yeah, that would help. If, wow.
Well, I think we could think about it and see if there's a way-
We can think about it and maybe limit it to, it depends on the poll hours, too.
But one thing is that-
And we're gonna lose daylight comes September.
This is completed. There, like it was beforehand, there was the loop, kinda like a horseshoe loop you could go around. We could have a designated polling area parking, which would be this area, and then the access towards the courts would be only for fields, so that people, the only people who go down this way are only people who are using to go-
So, I mean, if somebody-
The back, the back way, you know what I'm saying?
If somebody polices it, I don't know who, but-
Probably say it.
If the, if the field's being booked for that day, 'cause at night, we're gonna lose daylight by September, so I don't know how late the night, although football's gonna start and we have the lights, so it doesn't forget what I just said. But if they park out front and over there and they cut through to the, to the right, as we're facing, at the right side of the building-
That could work.
If they have to use the back fields, they stay to the right side of the building, all the way to the back field and across, they don't cut across the parking lot at all and they use those fields, baseball, whatever it is, but that could work.
That could work.
But I'll have a detail, what I'll do is I can have a police detail stand at the entrance to the football field from the parking lot, you know where the archway is?
Yep.
And the sidewalk there, so that anybody coming from this side of the building is instructed to either go on the field or go, stay on the grass and go all the way around. That could, that could work.
You could put those sawhorses up.
Sawhorses could be up saying, you know, to separate things and we could logistically figure that out, I think, if you're able to bifurcate that area, that would work.
All right, so that could work, but as far as any state or federal elections, absolutely not. That would be, that would go up to the Secretary of Commonwealth's Office on that one, they wouldn't like that.
Tony, what's the schedule for the football? When does it come out?
Oh, you know, the freshman play and all the psycho play, I mean, it's a busy-
Well, psycho's Sunday.
Oh, they play Saturday, too.
If, if, if it was an away game, it's a 50-50, so that's only gonna help for the-
Half of them play away, half of them play here.
So, that's the other thing you gotta realize, too. What about the locker rooms for the football players? What, they're all connected to the gym, you know, and also the buses, the buses would have to be instructed to drop off over here and not out back.
Let's, I'm saying, let's have an open mind, see if we can work it out.
We absolutely do, absolutely do, but the buses are a safety issue.
School locker rooms, I bet.
Well, psycho doesn't use the locker rooms.
No, but the JV or the freshmen, if they're using it, they have need, logistic, I think we could figure that out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But I need, it's ASAP, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I'd ask is-
Mm-hmm.
So, now we have to figure the date, what's anybody's-
If it works best for her, the 16th, I think that's-
Sound good.
There's no, Tricia, do you, can you think of why the 16th would be better than the 9th or the 29th?
Kathy and I talked and that's why she provided the memo that you have in your packet on it and I think she has some other pressing dates in her office, so that seems to work best for her, so I certainly support her recommendation.
Thank you.
Questions for the audience or anybody?
Anyone have any thoughts?
I hear crickets.
About this, obviously.
And Maury's, you know, she's all right with that, is she away? Doesn't, doesn't make too much difference, she'll, okay?
Absentee.
All right, want a motion?
Maury, do you have any problem?
Motion?
Yes.
Move to hold a special election to fill the selectman's vacancy on September 16th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
September 16th it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'll send you the memo, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a discussion and a vote of the naming of the Public Safety Complex Emergency Operations Center, or EOC.
Should we talk about it first or?
Yeah. I'll let you lead it off.
All right, okay. A week ago Thursday, I think it was, we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony and it was-
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, last Thursday?
Added Sunday.
It was a Thursday, I remember, and, oh, the 11th, okay. It was very well put together, it's, you guys were sorely missed, that's for sure. Marty, you did a great job, I thought. Mike Stewart could not be there, Chief Stewart, so, Mark Stewart, I didn't realize they were related, but Mark Thompson spoke in his absence and John Murphy did a very good job. It was, you know, a really good group, as well as Public Buildings Committee, Jackie's here and the group was there. They spent, you guys know, but a lot of guys, a lot of people don't that might be watching, Jackie and the rest of the Public Buildings Committee met every other Tuesday night for years discussing this, along with the town administrator and Nancy Holt and others. So, it was a very nice, very nice event. Unfortunately, the, you know, person we wanted to surprise was not there in naming this room after him, he was not feeling well. So, if I could, I'd like to make the motion now, unless you guys wanna say something first?
Why don't you make the motion and then we'll hear?
Okay. Move to dedicate and name the Public Safety Complex Emergency Operations Center in the name of Joseph P. Norton, whose contributions and commitment to the building, building this facility is greatly acknowledged and appreciated.
Second.
Second by-
Both of us.
Pick one, Lorraine. All those in favor? Oh, discussion, discussion, yeah.
Sure, I, I mean, there's not a more deserving person than this. I almost wish there was something bigger that we could put in his honor, he served this, this board for 30 years. I've done it for nine and I can't even think what would happen in 30 years. He had class, he had great knowledge, he had great leadership skills, he really, you know, kept this town moving on the upward and I can't say enough good things about him and he was a huge supporter of public safety and it's a very fitting recognition for him and I think it was a great idea, you know, I think we all came up with it and Tricia as well and it's a beautiful building and it's good, good showing for the effort he put in.
I'm remiss that I couldn't be there, I was in court, which was unfortunate and I couldn't get out in front of the judge before the dedication, so I felt bad I wasn't there. Um, that being said, you know, Muhammad Ali said back in 1978 that service to others is the rent you pay, uh, for your room here on earth, and I'll tell you, 30 years of dedication to the town, a town that clearly he loved, I mean, you think about all the meetings that he went to, as liaison, because we're all liaison to all these other committees that we go to, um, he has a wife, he has kids, he has grandkids, and that he dedicated himself for 30 full years, um, to the town, and, you know, throughout that, you know, he did what he thought was best for the town, he did a great job for the town, and I think it's fitting what little that we can to be able to name the Emergency Operating Center room for him, um, that's the room for the rent that he's dearly paid over these years, and I have to tell you, um, I'm, I'm very honored to be able to say that and vote for that, uh, it's well deserved, and as, as you say, I wish we had something larger, but, um, everybody here should be very proud, should be honored, um, because of what he has done, and, um, I know I am, and, uh, Joe, if you're watching, I just want to say congratulations, and I wish you were here, here to do it, but I'm glad that we'll have another opportunity to see you and, and do the same, hang a sign, wooden carved sign would look nice, so.
Great, nope, they, they said it best.
I just want to say, I was, I was thinking, I'm coming to the end of my fourth year, and it's take, I mean, it's, it takes a lot out of you, and I can't imagine the 30 years that Joe put in, like, like, uh, Mr. Danny was saying, with all the meetings and the different things, and, um, certainly well deserved, uh, I, I, I can't imagine doing that for 30 years, so, anyway, I'm very glad to support this.
Well deserved.
Do we have a motion?
We did.
Paul in favor?
We did, that's right, I forgot, it's been a while.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So hopefully Joe can join us when we actually unveil the plaque.
Hope so.
Great.
Or sign, or whatever.
Next, we have a little bit earlier here.
Interviews.
Right. Interview and discuss Session Two Board and Committee applicants for the Sister City Cork County. Let me pull that up.
I did print a copy for you, but it's...
Oh, did, yes, that's, that'd be easier, thank you.
There's one, he's withdrawing his application, and won't be attending tonight.
Okay.
So I, you'll see his name on the list.
I got you, okay.
So if it's only one, two, three, four candidates will be here this evening.
Okay.
Uh, Brian Hulahan, probably has a meeting in Boston, he's doing his best to get here in time, we may, you know, turn it on traffic.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Perfect. Okay, so...
There are two people, I'm sorry, there are two people who are interested in having their name at the half, but they're unable to make it on Tuesday evenings due to work restrictions.
Okay.
Just so you know that as well.
Okay. Alright, so first we have Eileen Adagna.
Come on up, Eileen.
Thank you.
So just for the folks at home, just give your name, and, uh, again.
Hi, thanks, my name's Eileen Foley Adagna, I, thank you.
What's your address?
35 Hickory Lane, here in Situate.
Tell us a little bit about some of your background, and some of the reasons that you'd like to be involved.
Um, my background, I'm, I'm 100% Irish, I have a lot of knowledge and passion for the Irish culture, um, I grew up in South Boston, and it says a lot about my Irish connections. Um, I'm a member of the South Boston Irish American Society, an active member, I'm an Irish step dancer, champion female adult Irish step dancer, and I have a lot of knowledge of Irish history and culture, and I feel I have a lot to offer to the committee also, thank you.
Any connection to Cork, specifically?
Um, no, a lot of connection to Galway, though.
Yeah, me too.
Have you been there?
Yes, I have, a few times, been to Cork also.
Have you?
Yes.
So, what are some of the reasons why, and what do you think you can help to foster this, it's, uh, just so people know, there's a lot of interest in this, um, given the Irish population in town, and there's the connections to it, um, I don't know how it's going to be selected, but, um, but if you have any, uh, any connections, or any, anything that you think would be, stand out in terms of helping with the organization of the events and what have you?
I do, I have some ideas, I have some ideas from my membership with the South Boston Committee, I'm an active member, um, we have functions, we have get-togethers, we have, um, um, comedy nights, we have everything Irish, we have Irish dances, we, we sort of an Irish, um, connection with Galway, the South Boston Irish Committee, so I'm familiar with all that, and how that works. Um, um, I think the Irish are about, um, having gatherings, um, and being connected with their history and their pride, and, um, I think I would like to offer a lot of that to the committee, and I think I have a lot to offer to the committee, thank you.
Mr. Danny?
No.
Well, thank you, Eileen.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your time, thank you.
I'm impressed with the, uh, step dancing.
Yeah.
Very good.
It's pretty much fun, thanks.
Faith Malone?
I was afraid someone asked.
Oh, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Very good, I'd like to cast a vote for you.
Thank you.
Again, Eileen, just for everybody, your, your name, and then just tell us a little bit about your background, and some of the interests, the reasons you have interest.
How much time do I have?
Uh, just pull the microphone over, you can slide over if you'd like, just so that everybody out in TV land can hear you.
I came to Situate, spent a summer on Peggy Beach, and then our family moved down, that was in 1944, and that casts a love of Situate in my body, and I was educated here, I went to Leslie University, I taught down in Washington in Chevy Chase, Maryland, and then I came back, and when I came back, they asked me to do some Red Cross work in Elmira, uh, and I ended up being, uh, disaster director for the Red Cross, and I saw the town through the blizzard of 78, and for that work, I became the first rose of mine, when it was the little folksy neighborhood parade, now, you know, everybody comes to Situate for the parade, but I've been to Ireland several times, my grandmother was from Galway, but I've been to Cork, I love Kinsale, and my bucket list now is to return, and I thought, how, I thought, you know, volunteering has always been a big aspect of my life, I was the first woman president of our North Situate Beach Improvement Association, and I'm always, you know, I'm just finishing up some publicity for the Situate Garden Club, but, um, I thought, you know, what would I be able to do? I, I like to write, I like to get involved with children, and I thought, it's like the French, um, group, where Situate and Cohasset are combined, I spent my last 24 years teaching, we're in Cohasset, and I know a lot of the families, and I thought that aspect of it, um, intrigued me, but I think just, you know, um, having this liaison, I think is a strong aspect for Situate to have, we have the French community, and we have the Irish, so, I, I've given it a lot of thought, and I thought, you know, I'm sure you have a lot of younger people, but, um, I'd like to be a part of it, so...
I guarantee you, age is not a criteria.
Okay, I don't do Irish step dancing.
That might be.
When you're teaching.
Anybody have anything?
Another strong candidate.
Right. Appropriate date to fill out the application.
Yeah.
St. Patrick's Day.
Right.
Oop, great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Faith, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the list, just in time, is Brian Hulahan.
I didn't even have any time to warm up.
How are you?
How are you?
Good, good. So just your name, just for everybody out there, uh, name and your address in Situate.
Brian Hulahan, 26 Turner Road, Situate.
Okay. And just, um, some reasons, obviously, uh, your, your background, where you're from, some of your, I know it all, but, uh, if you could just, kind of, just, just briefly touch on some of your connections, and some of the things, the reasons you want to be involved.
Okay, well, basically, I'm from County Cork originally, I'm from Ballincolig, which is, um, just, just west of Cork City, uh, been over here, I came over here when I was 19, and I've been in, in the States since, um, obviously, I run galley down at Situate Harbor, and, uh, as well as a couple of other restaurants, Tinkers being in Norwell, restaurants in the surrounding town, um, I've done things like this in the past, on the other side, in Ireland, when we've worked with, uh, I, I used to work in Kinsale, which is, um, beautiful harbor town in, in, um, County Cork as well, and we had a, we were assisted with, um, Newport, Rhode Island, so we did culinary stuff back and forth, and it was a lot of fun, when I was a young, young chef and training there, we'd have American chefs come over and work with us, and, and then we would send our head chefs over here to work with them, so it was a great program, and I, I would love to see something like that instituted here in, in Situate, um, it, it does, it does well for both, uh, everybody both sides of the pond, and, uh, when I was speaking to Seamus and, and a couple of people, a couple of delegates that were over from Ireland, they seemed, uh, very interested in the fact of doing some sort of culinary exchange, and, uh, since I'm, I know a little bit about culinary, and a little bit about West Cork, I thought maybe I'd throw my hat into the ring.
Appreciate it.
No, I think, another great, I mean, another great candidate, you've got the, the, you know, hospitality aspect of it, which is a lot of what goes on in these events, in terms of, you know, entertaining people, and keeping them moving around, going, seeing all the sights, I think that's a great aspect, and the fact that you're actually from the area, I think is great as well, so, I, again, I don't know how we're going to select it, but, um, we've got a bunch of good candidates.
Great. It's a very strong County Cork connection, obviously, since you're from there.
Brian, what would you, I, when I was down in Newport, taking my daughter, you know, picking her up at college and so forth, I saw a sign that they insist a city, you know, in Ireland, and, you know, what makes, what has made that so strong, it seemed like it's a, you know, it could Situate, you know, we're not as large as Newport, obviously, but, it's, and how long, do you know how long that's gone on for?
For years.
Right.
Years, now, again, I was, I was working in Kinsale 25 years ago.
Wow.
And, uh, it was going on, and it wasn't the first couple of years, but it's been going on for years, there's other aspects, too, which I could help with as well, which is they have a really strong rugby program in Newport, and in Kinsale, and, uh, both teams played as well, there's, there, there's a lot of, there's a couple of different ties, and probably, I'm a rugby player as well, as well, as well as a, um, a coach and a sponsor of our local rugby team here, not that, I, I kind of forgot about that, but it's another avenue, um, that was, that's a huge tie as well, so, not only on the food aspect, but on the sports aspect, and they've done a lot, a lot over the years to, to make sure that nobody forgets that they're sister towns, um, there's, there's a big event each year in each town, and it's, um, it's something that's very well executed, you know, it's very professionally done, Newport's a town full of, Newport's a town full of dozens and dozens of really good restaurants, as is Kinsale, so it kind of works well together, both very hospitable kind of towns, Situate is obviously a little smaller than Newport, um, as well as some of the towns we're talking about in, in West Cork, but if we could do it on a slightly smaller, um, level, it could still be very, very, very well done, I think, you know?
Yeah.
Great.
No, Brian brings a lot to the table, there's no doubt about it, the experience you have in Ireland with the twinning of, you know, Newport and Kinsale, and, uh, so that, that adds a lot, and, uh, so...
Great, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate you coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
Decision, not this time, right?
Not tonight, no. We're actually, we won't be voting tonight, uh, we originally were going to, uh, since Mara, uh, Selectman Curran couldn't be here tonight, we're gonna wait till our next meeting on June 6th to, to vote.
She's in Ireland, of all...
She's in Ireland.
She'll have a perspective. She's the advance party that went.
Exactly, yeah, so, next we have Carol Sullivan Hanley.
Hi there.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Again, Carol, if you're just, for the audience, if you're just, name and...
Yes, right, um, my name is Carol Sullivan Hanley, I, uh, live at 79 Turner, and I, um, have lived in Situate, gosh, 30 years this past, um, March, I can't, can't believe it. I almost put in my application that I prefer Murphy's to Guinness, with Murphy's is the beer that's brewed in Cork, as opposed to Guinness in, in Dublin, but, um, my family is actually from, from Cork, uh, great-grandparent, Jeremiah Sullivan, came over, I still have the, the Bible that, um, that he brought with him, I'm very active in, uh, town, um, civic opportunities, I'm a library trustee, I'm active in the Historical Society, I volunteer, um, at the animal shelter, um, and I was part of a Sister City organization, I grew up in, um, Arlington, Massachusetts, and, um, so, years ago, there was a fellow who taught at, um, MIT, and he would, um, often bring Japanese students, MIT students, to, to his home, well, their families were so grateful that they offered to, um, host, um, him and his family, and then a Sister City, um, relationship, uh, developed with a town called Nagaoka Kyo, so, it was interesting, because Boston Sister City is Kyoto, and, um, Arlington's about seven miles west of Boston, and Nagaoka Kyo is about seven miles west of Kyoto, so, um, I actually went to Japan, I lived, lived there for a summer, and I still stay in touch with the organization, it's still, it's still going, going on.
Interesting.
I went in 1979, when I had long dark hair, and, uh, so, anyway, that's, uh, that's it, but, um, I have a lot of energy and, um, passion, um, I, um, I have a household of, um, adopted unwanted creatures, and they all have Irish names, Galway, Seamus, Neve, Granya, and Clifton, so, anyway, I'm thrilled to, uh, to apply. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
How are you?
Thank you. We do have two other candidates who could not be here this evening, um, Maureen Dinsmore and Margaret McNamara, but we do have backgrounds that we can look at, um, so that's all the candidates that we have, we have right now, so...
And we're not going to be accepting any more of them.
Correct.
It probably vote June...
Yeah, we will be voting on June 6th, um...
Oh, you know what, can I ask, does anyone else have an affiliation with, what are the other groups that...
Well, that's a, that's a good point.
That are associated, that are going to have representation?
Merchants?
So we, um, notified those folks today, it's the Chamber of Commerce, the Harbor Merchants Association, the School Committee, and the Situate Harbor Cultural District.
Right.
We've heard from the Chamber of Commerce today, and we expect to hear from the three other groups, certainly before your next meeting, June 6th.
So, if you're associated with any of those, or know someone there, that may be a way to get on the committee, other than the, the tough choice we're going to have?
And the Suce Embree Sister City Committee, the nonprofit has two recommendations.
So there's 14 candidates for...
15 slots, the board has eight appointments.
Eight appointments.
And names the chair and the vice chair.
Correct, so, just to clarify, so, for instance, if somebody's a member of the merchants, they, they could fit that slot versus, you know, taking away one of the other eight, so we do have a little bit of, uh, working room there, so, okay, I appreciate everybody coming in. So, we're going to move on earlier to a presentation of a field study, Jaclyn Cock Commerford and Dan Fennelly. Didn't have to worry about the blinds anymore, I guess.
I like shot one.
Yes.
Give him a minute.
I click just one, I switch for all of them. Bye, okay, thank you. You're going to keep it on.
Thank you, thanks, Brian.
Lucky enough to get you on a little bit earlier.
Great. It's kind of strange being here in the dark.
Yeah.
Do you want the lights on? It's up to anybody who wants to see it or not.
You have the presentation in front of you as well, we printed out a copy. You want mine?
Yeah, I think I'm fine.
I mean, you can still see that, anyway.
Yeah.
Not now.
What happened to it?
It's back.
It's there. Um, apologies for, I think we sent, I sent out a rough draft originally, that was probably within your packet, so the hard copy that you have in front of you is the one that we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
Um, my name is Jaclyn Cock Commerford, and I have Dan Fennelly with me, and we're both representatives of the Recreation Commission, and, um, I'm currently the chair of the Field Studies Subcommittee of the Recreation, um, Department, and, tonight, I'm here for two reasons, one, this group has been together for about 18 months or so, and they've been doing a lot of work on looking at the fields, and what some of our needs are in town, and we felt like, um, now is definitely a pertinent time to start sharing that information with both the board of, um, Selectmen, but also with people at home, and people who are, are looking at these types of things, and number two, we're here to ask your help, um, in supporting our endeavor to try to improve the field conditions that we have, and, um, looking at some of our long-term needs for fields. Additionally, I heard at the town meeting that there was commentary about, questions about why we would need fields, and what's going on with the fields, so I wanted to try to, um, inform everybody tonight about some of the current conditions, so that we are, um, aware of why we're even doing this. Um, for starters, the, the current field conditions, all the sports playing fields in Situate are in poor condition, and I would actually maybe say even very poor condition. Uh, most of the fields are down to mud and dirt in a lot of spots, there's definitely probably more weeds than grass on a lot of these fields, the grass that's growing on these fields is not the adequate sports playing, sports playing type of grass, most of the grass as there is just traditional local grass, um, versus, um, there are many different types of grasses that you can use for sports fields, that maybe have longer root systems, or that have, um, hardier life structures to withstand the different environments that you have with both sports and with your local environment, um, and additionally, the, um, drainage along the fields has been really poor, so, um, there's just been a lot of overuse on these fields, so that things have been tramped down, weeds have permeated the fields, and we have, um, a bad situation that's just been getting worse on a regular basis. Um, personally, I think that in the past one year, the fields have deteriorated even more significantly, I think the drought last summer had a lot to do with that, um, I joke around with these guys all the time, but I've, I've read a lot about grass in the past year, but there's, um, when it, when there's a, when there's a season of a drought like we've just had, and the grass goes into a dormant nature, it also goes into a very delicate nature, and so, any type of, um, compacting, and you know, if you imagine cleats on grass, does just as much damage to dormant grass as it does to wet fields, and so, we've taken a bad situation, added the drought to it, and then had a few soccer games on it, and so, right now, the fields are, um, in really tough shape. Um, so the need for fields, and the discussion on fields is actually not a new subject in, in Situate, we found that in 2001, there was a study done, and so I'll, I'll touch on that tonight as well. put together a field study, which is a subcommittee of the Recreation Department and the premise behind this was to bring together people from the different sports organizations, the Recreation Department and the seniors, people who are using these fields, to come together to have a common discussion about issues, um, potentially try to do some problem solving and share some ideas that, um, they have. So, the sports organizations that have been represented in this commission are seen here in the slide and it's the Recreation Commission, um, the Recreation Department, field permitting, the DPW's been a part of these conversations, the high school athletics program, a lot of the youth, in fact, all of the youth programs, senior softball, um, men's softball and, and some of the new programs we have like flag football have also been included. So, the first thing that we did was we started, the group took, took a look at all of the fields that we're actually using for playing fields right now and there are eighteen fields that were considered in this and these were all the, um, multipurpose playing fields that house things like soccer, lacrosse, football and we did not look at things like tennis and basketball for the purpose of this. Um, in this slide, you can see bolded in blue are the fields that are right now regulation size that we could host, um, high school sporting events at.
Excuse me.
And there are actually two fields on here, both Cudworth and Safe Mary's, I have an asterisk next to it and those are fields that the town does not actually own, but the sports programs have, um, permeated and gotten approval to play on because of our need to expand with our programs.
Who owns Cudworth?
Cudworth Cemetery Association.
Cemetery, so it's the, uh...
Yes. So, uh, one of the things that the Field Study Subcommittee did a little over a year ago was run a, a survey within the organizations that are using the fields and they asked basic questions to help them develop an idea of what the conditions and the safety were of the fields. So, respondents were asked to answer questions about the size of their programs, expected growth of the programs, um, they looked at all the fields and rated them based on, um, things that they felt were contributing to the conditions or safety of the field. A score of five would have been a skirt, a perfect score, a score of zero would be one that people considered, um, you know, very bad or unsafe. And there was also some opportunity in the survey for respondents to give commentary about top issues that they felt were, um, with the fields. So, if you look at this, you can see that, uh, Purple Dinosaur was rated the worst field, um, both with conditions and with safety. There's been some improvements recently this year that were done to it, but if you had gone out there last year, the field is full of pretty large-sized rocks and there was some broken down, worn-out baseball or T-ball equipment, I think it was, um, and so it was, lacrosse had been using that field and they were finding that they were scooping up a lot of more rocks and lacrosse balls at times. Um, so, the turf is on there, although I, I don't know that I would rate that field with the rest of the fields because of the different, um, material, but then the Gates Multi-Use Field is the one that's currently rated the best out of all those fields and that has a, this condition scoring of two and a half for, out of five. So, the top issues that were identified in regards to the fields were the need for field improvements, adjacency to other fields, um, additional parking, additional and storage, um, bathrooms or permanent bathrooms, lighting and trash maintenance. Also, as a part of that study, this is the data that was pulled on the number of participants per program and what the expected trend is in the next three years. So, I've sorted this, uh, by the expected trend in the next three years to help our group kind of make some decisions that would be considered more long-term than short-term in need. Um, but I think what this slide also shows us is that the, most of the programs in town have still some growth expected in them. There are a handful of programs that are flat or not necessarily growing, but there's been some real opportunity for some sports like field hockey and flag football, youth lacrosse, um, that show that their numbers are still increasing. So, what we did was we took the fields and we looked at the numbers of hours that the fields are permitted for each season. We assumed that, based on another, um, professional engineering study that was done in another town, that identified a well-maintained field can withstand two-hundred-and-fifty events, they called it, and for the purpose of this, I've called an event an hour of time, so that may or may not actually be equitable, but, um, and the other thing, the other study identified was the fact that, you know, a younger kids soccer game was gonna have a different impact to a field than the high school boys' game, um, and I don't make any kind of consideration here for that. So, looking at the number of hours that our fields are currently permitted versus the scale of saying two-hundred-and-fifty hours is what we should be doing, we have, um, you know, a need basically for twenty-one fields. Right now, to give you some perspective, we're using baseball fields for soccer fields, we're using, uh, you know, like I said, fields that don't belong to us for soccer fields and lacrosse fields, um, we're starting to carve out niches of the elementary school land to, you know, hold practices and things like that, um, but I, what this is obviously really showing us is that every single field that we use is, is being overused and that's a really significant problem. Um, and so, if we start thinking about like, okay, if we needed to have a couple more fields, how do, how many do we need? I don't personally think the answer is twenty-one, but I think that there's probably a case to be made that it's a significant number of fields that we need. Um, back in two thousand and one, when the original field study was done, that study called for seven new fields at the time and at that time, there was a plan to have the high school girls softball field at the, um, high school. It called for two fields at Wampatuck and it called for two fields at Cushing. Um, since that study was done, the ECC Playground has moved to Wampatuck, which I think eliminates the possibility of having, um, a, a full-size field built there and the remaining areas that are set are not regulation-sized. Um, the girls' field hockey field, which was behind here in front of the middle school, was lost to the medical school construction. Um, the main Cushing field was redone in two thousand and sixteen and I believe that was probably one of the areas targeted in the twenty thousand, two thousand and one study. Um, and, um, right now, we're looking at the rest of the land, um, for the Situate High School softball field. Additionally, since that study was done, new sports have been added to the, um, town, we have flag football and youth lacrosse, which are two of our biggest growing programs that have been added and I've actually heard of rugby recently, um, looking for space. Um, the company that did this study was a company called Dayler, it was bought by Tetra Tech in two thousand and eight and unfortunately, this company no longer does analysis on fields and they don't, uh, claim to have any of the records from two thousand and one on this, so, um, we've got hard copy files that are around town hall for some of this information. So, um, Dan, who's with me, had done a lot of work last year on looking at the land in town and, uh, we tried to put a picture of, together of like where we could actually put fields if we had the space to do it and what it was gonna look like. So, just some numbers that I think are pretty interesting is that in town, we have over nine hundred acres that are in conservation. We have nine hundred acres that are considered open space. Right now, there's sixteen to twenty-one acres, um, in the land swap land and our public facilities take up about five hundred acres. No residential land was reviewed in this, we were only looking at town-owned properties in this. So, um, the pieces, the parcels of land that we have, so if you think about the size of a, a regulation-sized soccer field or lacrosse field or football field, you need at least really four to five acres per field. I mean, you could potentially squeeze something into a two-to-three acre area, but if you really consider the parking needs that go along with it and access to it, you're probably looking at more like four or five acres per, um, field that you would put in. So, when we looked at the parcels in town, that could accommodate something like that, were really pretty limited. In fact, I would say that the only two areas in town left that are probably realistic that would allow us to have more than one field or several fields together is the land that's behind the library, um, pushing back, not where the new, um, housing complex is going. And then the other one is behind, in between the high school and Cushing Elementary School, um, there's a pretty steep grade on that land, but, um, that is other town-owned land that I think we could use. Um, you know, there's other land I've listed on here with some of the acreage that people have mentioned to us and are part of this and, um, there's some issues with, with many of them, including, um, things that are labeled town forest and we know there's issues with the Ellis Estate and environmental issues with potentially the old town dump that keep these from being considered.
Jackie, just a quick question if I could.
Yeah.
So, where you've got the, the four to five acres, as you're saying, per field, what if, in a, in a situation where if you had a couple of different fields in the same area, different purposes, but sort of the same parking area, would that, is that something that you considered at all?
I mean, I think yes, I, I think consideration has to be made for how big you're going, but one of the things that the group has talked about is being able to, even if we were to use the land behind the library per se, then you would have adjacency to Central Field and also to Gates and so there's parking kind of all mixed in there that you would be able to utilize. Um, and so I think that would work, I think if we tried to cram a whole bunch of fields into a, as an already a tight area, parking would be, in fact, if you consider the land behind Cushing and the high school, um, you know, I think that's a great idea in there, parking becomes a bigger issue then and has to be considered in that one. Um, so, it, so this is just another summary of the land that was looked at and, um, how much acreage is there and some of the issues and, as if I, I don't know how to go back on this, but there was, um, some, I forget how many parcels of land, like thirty parcels of land that were identified between two and four acres and when Dan, um, did this, he was thorough enough to actually go through the wetlands database.
Went through the FEMA maps, the wetland maps, actually visited, um, quite a few of the sites to see what they look like, um, and what we found was most of them are really not usable for a variety of reasons. Um, a lot of the properties the town owns are not usable at all, they're wetlands completely, uh, some are underwater, et cetera, but when you look at, for example, the Driftway has a large acreage there, but if you really look at the land there, there's, there's not that much that would be usable for fields. Uh, the complaints we've gotten about the Driftway, for example, was it's an insect problem, you don't wanna have kids playing down there in the summer with all the insects coming in. So, there were things like that, the town dump, obviously, the old town dump, um, environmental issues with that, uh, there were some other properties that you could carve a field out of, but, you know, half of it's wetland and half of it's not, then, then you get into access to it, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are a lot of problems with the properties, even though there seem to be a lot of properties, the reality is for fields, there's only, as, as, as Jackie says in the presentation, there's only less than ten total.
So, the Field Study Subcommittee, um, in the past year has, um, identified what we believe to be the top issues and this is in priority order. So, number one, the top issue to softball is, um, a Situate High School girls softball field, um, and it's something that we've been working with, uh, athletic director of the high school on. Um, number two is the inadequate number of fields that we have. Um, another important piece that I meant to mention earlier was that, um, part of proper field maintenance is actually allowing fields to rest and have, um, time to grow during the growing seasons and proper irrigation and it's not something, number one, we've never had a, like a real maintenance program with the fields, probably never really had to, but with the growth of the sports programs, we've been trying to put together a maintenance program and are finding that we aren't able to adhere to what a proper plan would be because of the fact that we don't, we aren't able to give our fields enough rest because of the demand that we have on the fields. And you know what, you could say, just don't permit out those fields, but then we're right now serving like five thousand kids in town and, you know, which kids would you choose to not serve by eliminating the need for this right now? And I don't think anybody wants to go in that direction and I think that most people will probably like to be able to do at least what we're doing now, but we need to be able to give these fields a rest and let them have their growing seasons and, um, potentially give them some better irrigation as well. Um, so then number three, um, you know, poor field conditions due to overuse and I'd have to put a plug in for the DPW because they've been very engaged with this commission, um, for the past year or so and they've been really working with us on the improvements that we need where possible and we started looking at places like Purple Dinosaur Park this year and doing what we can, um, in the short amount of time and with a limited budget to, um, try to get that field back online. Um, and a fourth issue is a lack of complex making it impossible to support like a tournament or, you know, support cohesive scheduling for families. Many of our fields are not up to MIAA and NFHS guidelines, which are, um, High School Athletic Association guidelines, um, which, you know, if we play on these fields that aren't up to code, that we're, open ourselves up to liabilities, um, or just not being able to support things. Uh, our lack of adequate parking and facilities and concessions makes it obviously awkward for supporters, lack of lights making it impossible for evenings, um, and a sort of final note that we've started to talk more about is the, the lack of turf fields that we have, um, which has become more significant this spring, especially because with the long wet springs we've had, not only are we tearing up the wet fields, but we are delaying spring sports, whereas a lot of other communities around us that have started to build out turf fields, they've been out there practicing since March and, um, we haven't been able to do that. So, what the Subcommittee has done for the past, um, year especially is tried to create a plan of how to attack these issues. The short-term things were all things that we were hoping to get done in less than a year, these are things which I would say are happening now, if not being, um, worked on. That includes addressing the unused spaces, like I mentioned, at the elementary schools. Um, we've been, you know, trying to adopt an interim field maintenance program and, and sports programs have been a lot better this year about making sure that the games are canceled and not only actual rainy weather, but even like a day or two after the rainy weather so that we can allow the field some time to dry out. Um, one of the things that we need to do, uh, I've talked to DPW about this, so I think I will speak with, um, water conservation, but most of our fields actually have irrigation and we take a conservative stance in Situate to not irrigate our fields, especially in the summer months when we have, um, more water issues. But I would say in, in a year that we don't have severe water issues, especially if we are able to do anything with some of the new wells and things coming online, we should be considering watering the fields during those drought conditions so that we aren't actually putting it into that dormant fragile state where it breaks the next time you step on it. Um, and then additionally, looking at developing a longer-term plan to, um, solve for the rest of the issues. So, that brings us to the medium-term types, one, two types, one, two, one to two years and what we'd like to do is add fields and realistically, what this group would like to do is add fields in a complex type design so that the fields are adjacent to each other. Um, and then, you know, theoretically, by adding more fields, it'll give us an ability to spread things out a little bit, let fields rest and grow grass properly so that we can adopt a formal field maintenance plan. And then finally, long-term, um, really looking at severe field reconstruction, um, looking at a new press box, bathroom, storage concession, maybe even establishing something like an indoor, um, turf complex. And another note, um, the fields right now, I would say, are, um, the fields are in such poor condition right now and the DPW has been out there aerating it and seeding it, it's getting fertilization, but it's, the fields are sort of at a point where almost every field except for Cushing needs to be completely redone for both drainage issues and to make sure leveling and grading is there as well as having the proper grass planted on the fields. So, Cushing, um, has been offline for the past year and is offline again this season and should be online this fall and everyone is committed to not permitting the Cushing field out for more than the two-hundred-and-fifty hours because that's, we'll consider that a well-maintained field, it will have irrigation with the new well that's going in and so there's been commitment from the group to adhere to maintaining the integrity of that So, the considerations that we have in front of us are that, um, the sports organizations and the Field Study Commission made a recommendation to the Recreation Commission that, um, we'd like to have a professional engineering study done to give us, um, real estimates and a real plan towards being able to execute on some of the longer-term goals. Um, the sports organizations have committed ten thousand dollars towards the studies, or estimates to complete this type of study. Um, we don't know the exact cost of having that done, but it's estimated to be between ten thousand and potentially up to forty thousand. However, I think that, um, having looked at some of the other studies that were done in other towns, I think that this Field Study Commission has done probably half the work that some of these other, um, engineering firms come in and do by taking the survey down, survey analysis and going out and looking at the fields and the condition of everything and we have all that information, so I think at this point, we really need a professional to come in and say, here's what the data that you've given us and here's what we have to work with, here's what we're suggesting the, the plan look like and how you could phase it out and how much each of these things would cost. Um, to help offset, you know, future costs, we've started to look into things like grants that exist and we know that there are, um, I, I know of at least three hundred thousand in grants between MLB and NFL, I'm sure there's probably other grants that exist between soccer and lacrosse and some of these other, um, sports that are out there. The Recreation Commission has been discussing at some of their meetings, raising user fees to help support additional maintenance on these fields. Right now, we charge, um, each user five dollars and we're looking at potentially doubling that to ten dollars next year so that it can go towards the maintenance of this. Um, you know, having, allowing fields in a complex structure would allow us to do something like host a tournament, um, and if we were able to host a tournament, there's an, you know, an ability there for the town to actually make money on that, which could go towards the maintenance of those fields. Um, additionally, a side note to that, if, if we were able to start hosting tournaments, there's also the fact that we'd be bringing in hundreds of families on those weekends that would be coming into Situate and eating at our restaurants and shopping in our stores and helping support the economic, um, aspect of the town in other ways. Um, and then, right now, unknown future uses for land hinder any major repair consideration and, um, I, I don't mean this to be a dig in any way, there's, we've been working with the DPW so diligently, but there's a, we're kind of at a point with places like Purple Dinosaur or even looking at some of these other fields where we know the COA is looking at that and it doesn't make sense for us to start dumping in money to these fields if it's potentially going to be used for something else and so I think that these things need to be tied together and I say that as a huge supporter for our new, new COA as well, so I just think that my ask would be that we consider, you know, like sort of a long-term plan that incorporates both things, um, as we move forward. So, just some information for people looking to know what other communities are doing, uh, other towns near us that have sports complexes. plan that incorporates both things um as we move forward. So just some information for people looking to know what other communities are doing, uh, other towns near us that have sports complex-type structures, or Norwell, Duxbury, Marshfield, Hangham. Um, this is the information that I was able to find online in regards to cost. So you can see that they range from, say, three to five million in regards to refurbishing fields or adding fields, and, and these all include turf fields. Um, so timing considerations on this is that we are at a funny point right now where um what this group would really like to be able to do is take the information that we've done, get real cost estimates on how much it would cost to create these fields or put, you know, approve a, an idea of moving forward and start executing that with the fall budget planning that's going to happen in a few months. And part of that would be, you know, the CPC deadlines are November first right now. And so we need money to get this study done, and we have this ten thousand dollars. And I, I know that the um budgets for this past fiscal year, you know, are done, people are executing on it. Um, but that if there was any surplus anywhere from projects that didn't end up getting done, or um things that didn't look like they're not going to get done in this fiscal year, that could be applied to getting this type of study done, I think it would really help this group start executing on these plans. Because realistically, if we can't get this study done, we'll probably go to CPC in the fall for money to get this done. And then that puts us another year out before being able to apply to CPC again for more funding, which puts us out to July twenty nineteen before any field constructions being done. And then most of the fields, like the grass fields, you're looking at at least a year, year and a half, so you're looking at July twenty twenty, July twenty twenty-one before you have any new playing fields in town. So even if trying to get this done right now probably puts us up, um, you know, six months to a year, but it's a, it's not a short-term plan by any means. Um, so that's, that's the information that I have um for you guys, but I open it up to questions.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Really great.
I'm sure, uh, presentation was great. Some of the things that I wrote down, you did your research, there's objective findings there, a lot of collaboration between all the entities as well as the school. So it looks like you've really done a good job in terms of looking at every aspect of it. Um, firsthand, I see the situations in the field. I get emails from people saying it's unsafe for the kids to play on there. Actually impacts games. You know, you have, you have teenagers playing on these fields that aren't, aren't in great grass condition and they can hurt themselves. You have little kids playing on the thing where it hits a clump of grass and the ball just goes, the kid, four-year-old's going this way and all of a sudden the ball's going that way. So, um, and that's, that's with the DPW bending over backwards to get these fields in playable condition. Um, I see Mike Green over there. Every day, you know, they're out there and they get the list and they've got to get the softball field ready for a game at noon, and they've got to get this ready, and they've got to get that ready. They're, you know, what do you have, a staff of four, five, maybe? That work literally every day, all day to get these fields in the condition that they are. If you didn't, I don't, I don't think they'd be playable at all. Um, I like the fact that the communities are participating. All the youth groups have chipped in and they're going to help pay for the study too. That's always a big plus in my book. Um, I like the fact that you took maintenance and you incorporated in the project. So I was at one of the meetings and we were looking at fields that were next to each other, and, and Mike said, this is great, it'd be much easier to maintain. We wouldn't have to go from this field to that field to this field, but we'd be able to do a whole complex at once. Um, a great point there. Um, you know, the other thing, uh, two other thoughts that I had, again, my fourth grader plays on a, on a little patch of field about the size of this desk behind Adely, um, as our soccer practice with another team. So there's definitely a need for fields. But when you go to these games, there's a huge sense of community. I mean, there's just hundreds and hundreds of people out there. Kids make play dates, parents see each other in a, in a nice comfortable setting, and I think it's, it's really important to keep these youth programs as strong as they are. Um, the only downside of this is it costs a lot of money and the senior center is the next big project on my list. Um, but like Jackie and Dan said, you got to do some groundwork first before you, before you get to a big-ticket item possibly if it needs it. So um, I think you guys did a great job. I think there's a huge need for the fields, and I think um, I, I think there's got to be a short, an immediate plan, a short-term plan, a long-term plan, like you laid it out, and we've got to get going on it immediately. Because you can't wait another two years for, you know, for a field to grow. So, you know, great job for you and the committee.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I know I've talked to Dan in the past about this, and um I'm, I'm really happy that you were able to put this together. What I'm looking at now is the same thing Tony's saying, it's kind of like the short-term, midterm, and then a long-term approach to it. Um, I don't think we can wait until twenty twenty. If we do grass, I know there's a two-year dormant period, that's why Cushing's not going to be used, because you got to let it sit for two seasons before you can really let it set, set in and then utilize it. Um, so it begs the question about turf, and I've talked to Bill Luet about turf and trying to figure out what the town can do, because obviously that solves a lot of the issues of the wear and tear. It also deals with the issues of water, you know, during drought. I mean, the, I hate to say it, I'm, I'm still reluctant to say water the fields because we need the water for other reasons. So that really turns on turf. Uh, Bill showed me all these other communities, whether it's Duxbury or whether it's um, I think it was Plymouth South and Plymouth North, and you know, they all have turf. I just came back from a baseball game in Marshfield, and they redid the entire, both, they have two turf fields, and then they have all these fields that are all leveled out in front of the school. So they have a huge complex, and it's the grass, just what you said. You know, it's, it's grass for fields. You know, this backfield is awful. It's treacherous. You know, kids have seen kids sprain their ankles playing soccer. Um, they have the javelin throw next to the baseball game, you know, which doesn't make any sense. And you know, this is not an issue that, you know, the current administration's dealing, but this is what they're dealing with. They didn't create it. Um, you know, I even took a tour with Bill and come to find out the track is backwards. I mean, people don't realize, the track that they put in seventeen years ago was put in backwards. So they can't actually run a meet the proper way because instead of starting down here and running around, they, they did it from the other way, so they have to do everything backwards. So um, I'm actually looking at this more of like the immediacy, and I think, you know, the first thing I really want to jump on immediately is the uh girl softball field. And Title IX, we talked about this seven years ago, and we're all behind it. Seven years later, and it's, it's nowhere. And I, I think the first thing we need to do is address that in the fall and, and talk about it. Um, I think instead of waiting for CPC for next annual, I think, you know, it's a question of whether or not we should approach it this, this fall and talk to CPC, because they're, they're available to do that. Um, and maybe think about either getting funding for that, or certainly talking about some of the immediate issues to get it started so that maybe shovels in the ground starting next year. Uh, the issue though, I think, is interesting, that's going to pretty much probably um be fleshed out, is, is the Council on Aging, the Senior Center. We'll get that report on the fifteenth of June, or there, shortly thereafter, Tricia, I think.
They're coming in July eleventh.
July eleventh. But we'll, they'll have it to us, and so we'll take a look at that. So by July, we'll have ideas of the four locations and I suspect we'll, we'll have to talk about what we're going to do, but we'll, we'll narrow down, I think, from the public itself, those locations, and whether or not, you know, they're certainly not going to be looking at the six to ten acres that's behind Central School, but unless it's a part of a swap, then yes, it would be. So I think we'll have an idea by the end of the summer of some of these lots that you can take a look at. My personal preferences, um, I tell you right now, deal with this high school right away, put softball field there, take the JV field, put it behind Gates. Um, yeah, it's a location for the Council on Aging, but our Senior Center, Heritage Center, but I don't think it's going to go there ultimately. It's in the back. Uh, and put, put the JV field there, and then start dealing with, do we want to do a multi, you know, turf location at the high school to try to resolve, resolve some of these issues? And then take the land behind Central School. I know we have another feasibility study that we passed at a town meeting to deal with Clapp Road, and we'll know whether or not, well, there'll certainly be land there to build on. The question is the accessibility and what it's going to cost if there are any wetlands to go over, and we'll know that next year. But I think we have to tackle it sooner. Um, and I think the report really puts it out there for the public to take a look at. And realize that nothing has been put into this ground since, I don't know, since I've been in town seventeen years, nineteen, eighteen years. And I remember the town meeting where they're talking about fields, and uh, so I mean, it's, it's time to address the issue. And you're right, the fields are overused. I mean, the football field, JV football field is an atrocity. It's all dirt. They're kicking balls into the uh, into the, into the brush where poison ivy is and everything. It's, it's ridiculous. So um, so I'm all for it.
Great presentation. I remember, I think it was Jim Paul and among others in two thousand and one that looked at this, you know, same issue. And some of this was coming back as you were explaining it to me. Yes, I'm sitting here just listening and everyone's comments. I feel like your hands are somewhat tied. You know, it's been a while since I've been to the fields. My youngest is twenty now, but I remember going down to Kingston. You don't have that, we don't have that luxury of having acres and acres of field, fields other than the, the swap on Clapp Road. And like John just said, at best, that's going to be difficult to get in and out. Um, the lot behind the library, ten acres can coexist with the um, you know, the affordable housing. You know, I'm just sitting here thinking of, you know, maybe somehow when that site work is being, you know, if and when is being done, we dovetail it and, and have, you know, maybe some site work done. At this site you're talking about, um, I remember the field that was built down on Driftway. It was a beautiful little field for little kids. Told you, I don't know if you were in town at the time, but uh, the mosquitoes were brutal, you know, so it was almost, they had, they had to abandon it. It was a shame. It was a beautiful little field. Um, so just sitting here, I just think it's difficult to have a multi-complex field, but you know, like Purple Dinosaur, you know, that's not going to get any better, but that, couldn't that always be for the, for the Little League? You know, I just, not perfect, but things like that, like low-hanging fruit that could be, you know, fixed. Um, look forward to helping in any way we can, and you know, I, I realize being liaison to REC for a number of years, Jen, you know, grew that organization to the, to what it is today, to thousands, and that doesn't include some of your groups, the Little League and so forth. So whatever can be done, we'll support it.
The land next to Cushing in the high school, I know that you said it does go down, but it's relatively flat going from the driveway up from Cushing down, and then it drops to the football field.
There are certain areas that, but it's still, there's still some significant grading and obviously removal of trees and things like that that we need to take.
Dan, how many acres is that? Um, you know, off the top of your head, is it two, is it four?
No, it's more than that.
Is it really?
Four and a half, five.
Is it?
Yeah, I think it's about five.
Is that right?
Yes.
And what's a drop-off? Eight feet, ten feet over that?
A little bit more than that.
Really? Then the well would be down in this corner.
The well is down by the baseball shed.
Right, okay.
So I think that's, I think that's one of my pushes, obviously, the senior centers, we're going to be dealing with that very shortly. But I think the second issue that I'd like to see us try to tackle is certainly the Title IX issue with the softball field, which I think will start moving things in the direction. I think it begs the question of what the cost would be for a large turfed field. You know, I think one of the propositions was to try to do that somewhere up in the high school area, whether it was going to be next to Cushing in the high school football field, or whether to put it between the JV and the baseball field. I think it's a consideration because Norwell has that, um, that I remember seeing. It's incredible how they use it.
So just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, you're, you know, your top priority is Title IX, does that mean that you would want us to just go ahead and do what we can do to change the current JV field into the girl softball field? Or is that, does that mean making bigger at, you know, maybe creating a turf area over there? We've looked at a few plans or a few ideas where we could, you know, turf a significant piece of that, get the two fields that we need out of it and, um, you know, be able to get some of that grading and extra stuff done.
I think that would be, my push for it would be to say, okay, what would be, where would be a good multi-use um turf field location? And then, because the land's there, you're looking for a complex, the only way we're going to have a complex is either going to be the high school, or if you can use the gates, central field, and the ten acres as some form of a complex. They're a little more spread out, but it could be done there. And then, of course, you've got the Clapp Road, but I think that's only ten acres potentially, or I'm not sure how many.
Seventeen acres.
Seventeen acres, sixteen, so that's another.
And then the other three lots are about, I think, a total of ten.
Yeah, so there's going to be. So I think that'll certainly another area to look at, but we're not going to get that until later this year.
No, I think we'll get it. When can we get that studied, do you think? By the fall?
Well, we have to issue an RFP and hire someone to do it. I would say after the first of the, well, it's May, yeah, fall.
Fall, maybe.
If we, I mean, we have three other RFPs to issue that um same time, the demolition, the police station, and the transition plan for the ADO, so.
So what that can do is.
The, just if I could, um, the, the other comment I'd make, the challenge with the land swap property is also the shape of the property.
Right.
Because it's not, it's not just twenty-seven acres in a square, it's like a gerrymander type of, uh, you know, layout there. So trying to lay fields down on that may be a challenge.
Yep. And then you get the access in and out, it's going to have to be like a horseshoe.
And the access of, obviously.
So in order for us to move forward with um concrete estimated numbers and, and a plan on maybe how to parcel it out best in a phased approach, we need to get a professional engineer to come in and give us those numbers, and that's what we need the money for. So we've, we have ten thousand dollars that the sports organizations have committed, um, but now we need, you know, it could cost, it's probably going to cost more than that. Um, it could go up as high as forty grand, that's how much the CPC approved for the analysis of the land swap land. We, it's not known that that's going to even be forty thousand, it still needs to go up to RFP. So I don't know what the exact amount is, but that's what we need to move forward. Otherwise, um, if we can't find funding somehow in town to get that done, then we'll go to CPC in the fall, which is what starts to really set us back.
Just, no, no, go ahead. We might be able to go to CPC sooner, like, in order to, if we're going to have a special, to have them go in the, so in other words, I know.
We've heard that, we've talked, we were, this came up at our last meeting, and there were questions around if there was a monthly deadline instead of the annual deadline that exists right now, when the funds would become available. Because as of right now, the funds don't become available until the fiscal year for the town restarts in July. So our open question to that was if you had a, a meeting or an approval in, say, August or September, would you have to wait until the following July for those funds to free up?
I don't think so, no.
Typically, the funds would be appropriated at the fall town meeting and they'd be available immediately.
So by town meeting, April or fall?
Immediately.
Immediately. So no, if, if we had one in October, the fund, and it passed, then the funds would be available immediately.
They're in the current fiscal year.
And that was discussed, to have CPC articles, not all stacked up at the spring. You know, spread it out.
They're definitely open to that. I'm actually meeting with the chair tomorrow.
Dan's on the CPC.
Yeah, so I think that's definitely in the realm of possibility to get funds at the fall town meeting and then available immediately.
So that gives us the opportunity to kind of think about funding source. In the meantime, then think about, okay, what are you looking, the low-hanging fruit or immediacy as far as issues go that you want to address? I think, things are going to happen very quickly, I think. Once we, we get that feasibility study back from the Council on Aging, or on the Senior Center, Heritage Center, well, that's going to start moving. The townspeople are going to make a decision what they want to do. And I think that'll free up whatever spots are there, I think.
Jackie, is there any way you can get a little bit firmer quote? Like if it was fifteen thousand dollars, then that might be more doable than fifty thousand dollars.
Can we get a more realistic quote?
We could reach out to some engineering firms and see where it was. We just went off a couple of the plans that we had from other towns and just kind of ballparked what they were costing, what they were looking to do. But this group has done a lot of, a lot of work to it, so.
A lot of legwork every time, yeah.
I think that would be the next step. Again, if it was a small amount, there may be a way to find it. If it's a large amount, then it's going to be, you know, have to go from another source.
Just one other question. Jackie, Dan, anybody, you know, Bill, what would it take to be within, in compliance of Title IX? I know it's on campus, does it include, what does it include besides being on campus? I'd let Bill answer that one.
Total equity. So if we're talking about the baseball field and softball field, we're talking about dugouts, we're talking about batting cage.
Lights.
We're talking about lights. I mean, it's, everything that the baseball team has, the softball team should have. And it goes for fields too, and that's the big issue, I think. We were talking about having it in that area behind Cushing, but if we put it there and there's still two baseball fields, that's still not even.
Because it's two baseball, we need two softball?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's imminent, right? That's, it's just a matter of time before we have to come up with some sort of compliance.
Oh, without a doubt, yes. We're working on a Title IX audit right now at the high school, Jill Proudie and myself, and so anything that goes is coming.
Anybody in the audience have anything to add or any questions or anything?
I agree that there's, there's some immediate short-term needs. I think if we continue to put the pressure on the multi-use fields that we have today, they won't exist by the end, by the end of next year. I mean, they are in atrocious condition. And I agree that the DPW's been doing the best they can, but they, if we continue to put the same pressure on them, they're, they're going to, they're going to be unusable. So we have to figure out a way to rotate those fields. And, you know, I agree with Jackie, I don't think we want to go telling programs that they can't accept kids or that we've got to, you know, shut down one of our county sports programs. It's probably not a great idea, so.
You need to tell us your name and address. Bill, you're going to have to do the same.
I'm Sean O'Brien.
Sean O'Brien.
7 Fenny Crest Road.
And the thing that we haven't even mentioned is the fact that a lot of our youth programs are renting space outside of town.
Yeah.
So we're renting space in Pembroke and Go Hasid to use fields that we don't have time for. And a lot of, a lot of our teams only get to play games. There, there's not time to practice. So it's, you know, there's, there's definitely the need.
Another, another minor point, in the data that we collected for the use of the fields, that does not include some of the organizations that do use the fields. So we surveyed the schools athletic programs and the youth sports programs, but the schools use the fields for recess and play areas. There are other organizations that are out there like rugby and some other stuff.
Ultimate Frisbee.
Et cetera, et cetera. That'll also use the field. So this is a fairly conservative, I think, number of the use of, the actual use of the fields, because it doesn't incorporate the other people that are using the field.
And the fields are really used so much that there's not even time for like, high school kids to have a pickup game on the turf field because it's used from sun, sunup to sundown. So, and like John said, we have to find an immediate, a quick solve to get a field online. One field would relieve a huge amount of pressure, a legitimate sized multi-field, whether it's at the high school or at the land swap or someplace, we have to get some sort of safety valve for it.
We're working with a gentleman that I, we did Cushing field with and just in researching, putting the softball field where the JV baseball field is and turfing that whole area. I mean, the, the good thing about that, I mean, over the weekend, all sports were canceled except for sports that were using the turf field. And so no fields could be used. If we turf that whole area, we get three turf fields. So we're talking about where the girls softball field would be, the varsity baseball field and there's an area in the middle. Right now, in the fall, there's only one sport that, that's football. I mean, that opens up three fields. You have football, you could have a field, hockey field and a soccer field. You could have three soccer fields, you could have three field hockey fields. I mean, and then if you have rainy spring, I mean, we have three fields right there and, and the ability to have lacrosse and youth programs playing there on, on the weekend. So it just really opens up anything that we can do. I mean, you're talking about our, our town renting out other fields in other towns. Well, we're going to get that back, you know, and yes, the priority would be the town, but we do have the ability to, to fund it through renting.
I'm ashamed of the six kings way, but I want to apologize to the baseball hats for the meeting, but we came from an away game in Doug'sburg because we can't host any team. True story. And, but one thing that has been brought up kind of along the same lines as getting the money back is when we're hosting other towns, every Sunday afternoon, the other coach comes up to me and says, where's the best place to get fried clams in town? Or where's the best place? The people, we, I think, take for granted, we love Citrus, I don't think we take Citrus for granted, but I think we take it as a tourist destination potentially for granted and not only are they potentially renting fields, but these people stay all Sunday and spend money in Hartford. And that's, you know, money coming back to Citrus. I think that can't be forgotten.
I'm more from 19th off around funded for Citrus use lacrosse and I can vote for the fact that as a program, we try to keep our costs flat for all of our kids every single year. We're close to 500 kids, I think Jackie had on this week. We do try and rent fields indoors for our kids every single year. We run a raffle in order to try and fund that every year. And this year we won't make close to what we made last year in the raffle. Last year was a bad year. We spent close to $17,000 on renting indoor field time just to kick our program off. So it's a big expense that we, you know, as a program, we're fortunate that we have a lot of kids and we raise the money through the raffle sales, but other than that, we wouldn't be able to kick off our program until April, late April, May, if we just want that field.
I was just going to say, I'm more when anyone goes, I also Citrus use lacrosse. When we go to other towns to play and we see the facilities that they have, it's pretty amazing. And I think it builds the esteem of the town, which I think it would do in Citrus too. You would have more people that would, you know, be interested in coming here. And also the people in the town, those towns go out and actually use those facilities when they're not being used, which is a big draw, I think, as well. And it's something we really don't have.
I'm cutting 31 Marshall, I have a two youth center. Just to add, first thing I want to say is the DPW's done an unbelievable job maintaining what we have. I understand everything else, but don't forget, the kids in Citrus are playing, I don't know, I'll say they're playing on crap, okay? And I think it's the time for us as a community, a great town, to just make whatever measures, whether it's the high school, the, you know, I've been listening to this for 30 years. My kids play on the same fields. They're a mess. I was up there tonight just watching, you know, some kids trying to play on the central as a softball game is going on and it's just, you know, it, it's really unsafe. So whatever we can do for the kids of Citrus, I think is the key, the selling point to the, to the residents of Citrus that, you know, go take a walk on one of these fields and see if you can do anything. And, and again, the DPW has done a great job. So whatever we, you know, support, whatever can get done as far as when surveys get done and I think it's very important. Thank you.
Karen Camfield, 39, Sur side. Just because I don't know, what are the, has there been environmental studies on the, on the old dump site? What are the conditions that would prevent that from being, you know, a covered facility or a?
Are you talking about Stockridge Road?
Yeah.
I wouldn't step foot on Stockridge Road. I, you don't know what's under that. And, and, and I don't even imagine it's flat. You know, I haven't been back there since 1975 probably when they closed it, but that's when they let paint and everything, there's probably everything in there.
You have a good idea what's under that?
No, we're just to get.
It's certainly a consideration to take a look at. We've talked about it in the past for different things, but talking to Sean and talking to some others, the concern I have is this is one, it was unregulated and people threw everything in their sinkholes and you're going to have to think about, you know, trying to, if you put stuff on top of it, unlike the one that we have now that's capped, that's been done engineered, it was engineered to, to close and they cap. That's why it's the way it is and in time it will settle, but.
But even then, when Ty and Bond came in here, they said we could not put fields where the solar ray is because it hasn't settled.
It's still settling.
It's going to take until like 2030 or 20.
It's another seven years.
It's 2030 or something.
In Stockridge Road and behind there, it drops off. It's pretty wet.
You got the railroad, yeah.
Chris Roberts, 435, I'm still in road. So, I mean, the key is the study. I mean, we've been kicking this can down the road for the last 10 years that I've been involved with recreation and we've kind of maxed out our expertise, you know? I'm not, Jackie's a banker, I'm a, I sell t-shirts for a living and I'm not a field expert, you know? And that's, that's, we all sit around, we end up talking about the same things over and over again and it all comes back to the study. We've done so much legwork, but we need somebody to take all the pieces of the jigsaw puzzle and put it together for us and say, hey, this is what you need, given what we know about what you have available to you, this is what we recommend and this is what it's going to cost you. And that's, we can talk about this all night long, we can talk about it again in a month, another six months, but if we don't do the study, we're still a square one. And so if we don't, you know we have the $10,000, if you can please help us try to find additional funding to get this study done, we can do some more legwork to find out, try to get more solid number on what that's going to be, but we need your help.
I think like we said, if you, if there's anything you can do to get us a number, that's going to help, that's going to dictate what it is. I mean, frankly, I don't know if I'll be here because there's election on Saturday, but I think that is, the first step is to come back to us with a number so that we can see what we're, how big of a problem we're talking about. So Kevin, if there's anything, you know, you've got a huge plate going on, but you may know a couple of firms that do this and like Chris says, I've been to the meetings and, and we hear, we're talking about the same stuff, you know, using our limited knowledge to see what we think could fit where and what we should do first.
Can I, just a clarifying point on the number? Can we get a number solid enough that we could come back and ask for an exact number or do we have to get a better idea from the RFP process?
We can call a couple of firms and, and see what, how busy they are and how, how much you can get us or what they actually think we need. And we can even set up a meeting and you can take all your data and you meet and have it in here and see where we can go going forward. That'd be the first step. Our original, the original take when we did it, when I met with Jackie originally, I think we came up, we spoke to one firms that had done most of the work around here and they were on $40,000, $42,000, something like that. But we can reach out to them again and give them the data you have and see where we can go.
So I'd say, see what the numbers are. If it's 40, then, then we know the number. I'm not sure we have it to deal with immediately, but if that's the case, then we immediately, we will set it up for the fall for a special, because we'll probably have a special. And if that's the case, then at that point, we go for it at that point in time. That's, that would be my push.
Okay.
I think the fact that.
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have some DPW projects with Kevin Cafferty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, yourself just got the number one.
Did they really? I was just curious. Awesome. Thank you. That's awesome.
It's not even a tease you about it. It's like two, it's two easy.
Is there a specific IT or?
Chalk.
Specific IT person to talk to?
This is the connector right there, so.
It's not going to help me. Is there another variety?
It's a little.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I think this is a HP Windows machine. It's not the other.
No, I have the.
The cord for the connection, is it right over there?
Is there a different?
There's an old fashioned one over there.
Give us two minutes and hopefully we get set up technically. Last time we were in here, we checked to make sure it worked and we had all the parts and pieces, it did work, so we'll get it, we'll get it squared away.
Very good.
This is a presentation by Ty and Bond who we were just speaking about and they've done the copper study for us. We've been in multiple times talking about the copper study and the problems that we have with the discharge for the wastewater treatment plant, where the values of the copper has reduced significantly and we've been working on a solution to get it. And this is the fruits of the study that we had done.
So it's not so much gallons per day. Equally as important, it's the copper content, pots per million.
Copper content, we did have a content of like 20, was it pots per billion? It went down to four pots per billion?
Yeah, we got it down to four.
It was 20 pots per billion and then it went down to four pots per billion. And this was, this has been going on for quite a while with our NPT's permit. Back, Anthony had this original problem way back when, when he got a CDM working with him, trying to get squared away.
So by November, we've got it reduced down to four?
Correct. That's where the DPD would like us. We would, we've, we've applied and we've continued it, continued it, continued it. And we're trying to work with them to get it.
But we're not at four now?
No.
So this has been on the board's plate.
Right.
For eight or nine years. We're under a consent order and our permit expires in November, so as part of that renewal, we've had to come up with a solution to deal with. It doesn't affect our water, for drinking water, it's about how the water's discharged into the river and what it contains that affect other non-human species.
So thanks for the intro.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I didn't mean that, I didn't mean that sarcastically.
No, this is Ian from Ty and Bond and Luke's here in Lake Schrader. And Sean, we're all, we're all here for this.
I'm used to my wife doing that for me. Nothing clears a room like a wastewater presentation, I guess. I'll try to keep it short on, on stink and heavy on, on useful information. So essentially, I pulled together a, a short summary presentation of what we've been doing to look at copper removal down at the plant. And, you know, in terms of what I hope to talk about in the next 15, 20 minutes, we'll go through a little bit of a project background, some of which Kevin just covered. We'll talk about what we did to try and identify copper sources at the plant and throughout your water and wastewater systems at large. I'll talk about discharge permit compliance alternatives that we looked at and some of the costs associated with those alternatives. Talk very briefly about permitting requirements and then some of the next steps that we hope to take. So in terms of regulatory history here, you know, as Kevin said, this has been going on for a long time. You know, NPT's permits or, or National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits are issued on five-year cycles, okay? And I think this goes back probably three, maybe four cycles, permitting cycles. So, you know, it could be 15 or 20 years in the making with increasingly tighter limits that have resulted in this EPA order of compliance, which established an interim limit back in March of 2013. There's several other orders preceding that that aren't worth getting into, but this is where we're at now. That order required annual reporting, which the town has been keeping up with, but ultimately it, it will require compliance with a new limit by this November. Now, what drives these copper limits? Well, they're primarily driven by aquatic toxicity and this is really kind of a fancy way of saying that copper in the water can, can hurt the bugs and the smaller organisms that live in the receiving water. The limit that a plant like yours ultimately gets and any plant frankly that's permitted under this program, has a lot to do with how much dilution there is in the receiving water. We'll talk about that more, but you have pretty limited dilution at the plant now, largely because of where the outfall is located. So all of this has come around to a, a limit of four microgram per liter. That's parts per billion that you would have to be in compliance with by this November. Interim limit's 20, which will through, you know, some really good housekeeping and in good operations has been meeting. But the crazy thing about this to many of us is that the, the limit you're going to get at four is essentially 65 times less than what's allowed in your drinking water. And I don't say that to kind of stir the pot, but it, I mean, it is, it's an arithmetic So going over our, our scope of work, we really focused on, on two means of bringing the plant into compliance. The first looked at outfall relocation. You know, currently the outfall comes out to this mosquito ditch here, is effectively zero dilution at that point, which is the, the point of compliance. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about some outfall alternatives we looked at, how that might impact a, a copper limit, the permitting requirements and costs associated with those things. We're also going to talk a little bit more about some copper reduction strategies, I guess I should say, that we looked at. Initially, we took a look at the water system, see where the copper was coming from, then we took a deeper dive into the plant itself, the wastewater plant, that is, to see where copper was either coming from or being stored or concentrated within the plant. We'll talk a little bit about some treatment alternatives that could be implemented at the facility and probably close out with some bench scale testing results. So, yeah, I just changed graphic to look at a different treatment system. So we started off with a pretty substantial system sampling program and we did this, you know, engineers, we, we like to kind of draw what we call a control volume around the problem, but this is just a boundary and we try to figure out how much copper is going in and how much copper is coming out. And this is what we've described here as a mass balance approach. So with Will and his predecessors' help, the water and wastewater operation, we've collected a number of samples everywhere from the, the. the facility, and probably close out with some bench scale testing results. So, yeah, I just changed graphic to look at a different treatment system. So we started off with a pretty substantial system sampling program. And we did this, you know, engineers, we like to kind of draw what we call a control volume around the problem, but this is just a boundary. And we try to figure out how much copper is going in and how much copper is coming out. And this is what we've described here as a mass balance approach. So with Will and his predecessors' help, the water and wastewater operation, we've collected a number of samples everywhere from the, the town's wells, through the water treatment plant, out into the distribution system. And then we, we took a look at copper coming into the plant. And we've done this by looking at both dissolved and particulate copper, because we figured that, you know, it is likely easier for us to remove particulate copper, because we can settle it out through many of the existing operations at the plant, whereas dissolved might pose some more challenges. And we'll talk about how that actually worked out through sampling. So here's the, the simple way of looking at it. We started out in the drinking water distribution system, and we, we essentially found that, you know, coming off of the water treatment plant, you really only have around sixteen or seventeen microgram per liter copper going out to the houses. But once it goes through the plumbing in your house, which is largely copper pipes, plus everything that we have flushed down the drain that could have copper in it, the concentration in raw wastewater coming into the treatment plant is up to forty microgram per liter. It's noteworthy that, you know, while it is forty, a large portion of this is particulate. And right now, a big part of the success that we believe the plant has been having in getting down to, I'll call it four to six microgram per liter coming out of your treatment facility, a lot of that success is attributed to this solid portion of the copper dropping out, or being filtered out through existing systems that you have in place. So this is kind of a snapshot of all the data we collected as part of the mass balance effort. This is on the quiz at the end of the presentation. But really, what you got to pay attention to are, are these numbers here. And this is, this is three data points. And really, we, we tried to conduct a pretty intensive sampling program across a short duration, so that we could get an idea of how different operations that vary day-to-day at the plant might be impacting things. And when it comes to the effluent, we found that really, there's, there's pretty good consistency right now with operations. And the total copper is really quite often between four and, and five, or maybe even six, microgram per liter. But as this has gone through the plant, you see that our dissolved copper is now four as well. So pretty much all that solid material has been removed, and everything that's remaining is dissolved. So if we're to approach a treatment solution on this, it really needs to focus on precipitating out dissolved copper.
Did you look at that after a real rainy day?
We didn't. And that's a fair, that's a fair question. You know...
I'd like to think the copper would go down, and then there'd be some indication of our I and I problem.
It could go down. You know, it really depends how that big rush of flow pushes solids through the plant. You know, it, it could kind of impact it in either direction. You know, this is only three data points. And it's three data points that, you know, have, have led us towards a potential solution. But there's additional analysis that needs to be done, and that kind of highlights it. So as I said at the outset, we're really looking at two compliance alternatives. The first is to relocate an outfall from that mosquito swale adjacent to the plant, out to somewhere where it would get much better mixing, either in the ocean, or maybe down to Herring Creek. And we'll talk about that. By increasing the dilution, you would be able to increase your discharge limit. So in kind of simple terms, double the flow, you know, that's diluting the effluent, you could double the limit. It oversimplifies it a bit, but it's an order of magnitude assessment of it. Yeah, the, the other thing we looked at was decreasing effluent copper. And we did that, we took a quick look at reducing sources across the drinking water system, but as we pointed out on some of the mass balance slides, it's really not a ton of copper coming off of your potable water sources. It's all gained through distribution in the homes and wastewater collection. And we'll talk a little bit about improved existing system performance. So starting off with some outfall alternatives, we looked at two, this is kind of two hybrids on each other. This was an ocean outfall alternative we looked at. One goes up Driftway, one goes just to the south of the golf course here and gets out into the ocean. We really end up going out about fifteen hundred to two thousand feet into the ocean there, to get our point of discharge outside the zone of wave action, and where it could probably survive pretty well on the bottom of the seafloor. This alternative would require a new pump station at the treatment plant, which would have to be able to handle some of those high flows you mentioned from infiltration, inflow events. But it would provide ample dilution. It, it would also provide a number of permitting challenges, and the construction would be challenging and costly. We took a look at a Herring Creek alternative as well. So we go from the plant here, down around the edge of the, the marsh, and then get out to Herring Creek at this point. This is a much shorter outfall alternative, but it doesn't offer quite the same dilution as the ocean outfall alternatives. So additional analysis would be needed to figure out how much relief you would get on your, your permit limit under this scenario. Again, it's subject to a lot of the same permits as, as the last alternative I presented, but it is a little cheaper, because it's a shorter pipe run, and there's no undersea construction. In terms of treatment technologies that could help you achieve the copper limit, there's several out there that are capable of meeting a four part per billion copper limit. I mean, if you, I saw people on the International Space Station the other week, there's only so much water that goes up, and they're up there for months. So they keep reusing the same water. That type of treatment, while technically feasible, is exceptionally costly and impractical, from both a cost and an energy perspective.
That's my bucket list, and I want to go...
Here on Earth, yeah. Yeah, check that off. So, so we, we quickly discarded a number of treatment alternatives like that. We have a fair amount of experience on recent projects achieving low-level phosphorus at plants throughout New England. And, you know, this is an example of what we call a ballasted flocculation system that uses a ballast material, either sand or magnetite, that joins with chemically precipitated phosphorus. And then we recover the, the magnetite or the sand, and the, the heavy stuff settles out, bringing the metals or the phosphorus with it.
So would that achieve, do you think that's possibly, we could achieve our goal by having that type of system?
You could, but we think we have a, a better alternative that's less work than this. Okay? And, and that, that's really, it really hinges on optimizing the existing systems that you have in place. So what we did with William's assistance is, we got ahold of some chemicals that through our research, we had heard would precipitate dissolved copper out of solution. And, you know, the product is actually called MetClear. It's produced by GE. And we went to the plant, and we collected a number of samples, you know, at different points in the treatment process. And ultimately, I, I know it's difficult to see here, this is kind of a, a clear water sample, and this is a sample after the chemical's been added. And if you're looking at it on a, a good high-def monitor, you can see that there's little, little particles in there, call them pinflock, you know, which is, is really the chemical reacting with the copper, and hopefully grouping enough of it together so that it would get hung up on the plant's filter. Okay? So our, our bench scale testing, which we call jar testing on this slide, demonstrated that we were able to remove about fifty percent of the total copper, and about eighty percent of the dissolved copper. So, I mean, if you're able to produce four to six microgram per liter now, and you can remove, and it's all dissolved, and you can remove eighty percent of that, you could likely get below your four microgram per liter limit. Okay?
I'm going to be buying a lot of that water.
Yeah. Actually, it's, it's interesting. You know, we do a lot of projects for phosphorus removal. And, you know, on phosphorus, you're trying to remove, I'll call it, like forty to sixty pounds of phosphorus a day. Imagine a bag of fertilizer from Home Depot, essentially that much mass of material. Here, you're trying to get like one pound of copper out of the system. So it's, it's really a lot less metal that you're trying to remove, and consequently, a lot less chemical. So I think our, our study, at least at this age, suggested that we really only need like a gallon or two of this chemical a day. And here's how it could potentially work, and, and what we'd like to investigate further.
I might have some.
So for, for folks who are unfamiliar with the plant, in general, wastewater's coming into the plant down here. You go into aeration, that gets out into secondary clarifiers, and those flow this way towards the filter building over here. What we would hope to do is add chemical here at this point, which would allow us to add it essentially to effluent from all three of these clarifiers, just at one location. So it's pretty convenient. That would then flow into the building. There's what we'd call a wet well that feeds the filters in the filter building. So the chemical would have a little time to react with the copper before it went through the filters, hopefully precipitating out some of the metal. Goes through the existing filters. As solids associated with the copper build up in the filter, the filters backwash a number of times a day, and those solids would be returned to the head of the plant.
Right, well...
Yep. And they'd be removed with other solids earlier in the process. We'd need a small amount of chemical storage. One tank outside the building here that we've pegged right now is a fourteen-hundred gallon storage tank. That gives you like three months worth of chemical storage. And then possibly another day tank inside the building that's only like three hundred and twenty-five gallons.
Is it sensitive to the temperature outside?
Yeah, so that exterior tank would have to be heat traced. You know, and, and there's, there's some other stuff that we thought was prudent to add here from safety perspective. So we, you know, when we priced this up, we included an eye wash and shower, and this is some underground conduit with power and mixing equipment and stuff like that. So jumping back to all three alternatives, we said that we would look at permitting. And this is sort of getting into each one of these permits. The two outfall alternatives are really an alphabet soup of permits. Some of these are, are pretty mundane, you know, like an order of conditions that you could get from your local conservation commission up here at the top. Some of these, like an Article ninety-seven finding, or a couple of the others, actually require, I think, a signature from the governor to get them. So the take-home point from this is, outfall alternatives require tons of permitting. If we're able to successfully demonstrate the chemical addition alternative, it's relatively minimal permitting. It's probably a little bit of local wetland permitting for that outdoor storage tank, because of its location. And you'd need just a, a plan approval from Mast D E P. So relatively straightforward. In terms of capital costs among these alternatives, those two long outfalls that go out to, out to the ocean, along Driftway and, and the south side of the golf course, are both approximately fifteen million dollar alternatives.
Wow.
Because of the pumping and the, the undersea construction and whatnot. The Herring Creek outfall is substantially less, but still pretty costly at around five million. And then the chemical addition system that we're contemplating, we believe, is around six hundred thousand to implement. So in terms of next steps, we believe that based on the jar testing, you know, the bench top scale work we've done thus far, we think it would be prudent to try this at a pilot scale, or at a full scale within the plant. This would involve us coordinating with the operators to bring in some chemicals, some chemical addition equipment, and run the system for a month or two, and see what we can produce under a number of stress conditions like that, high-flow condition. Maybe try to catch a little seasonal variation, if we think that's appropriate. And during that time, we'd be monitoring not only copper removal, but we'd make sure that what we're doing to solve the copper problem isn't creating other problems with your nitrogen limits or, or things like that.
Have you done anything like this to other coastal treatment plants?
Um, not quite like this. Piloting is very common. So we've done tons of pilot studies for phosphorus. My other metals projects right now are, I'm doing a, a similar zinc project in Sturbridge, Mass, where we're trying to get to low levels of zinc. And we're doing a full-scale pilot there with different chemical coagulant than we're using here. We're doing a copper study in Winchandon, Mass, where they have a, a two-point-one part-per-billion limit. And, and there, we're headed towards doing something similar to So assuming that the project vets out successfully, and, and we get good data, we then move to obtain EPA and Mast D E P buy-in on a conceptual design. And then we'd move to design and construction of a permanent system. Now, here's the schedule that I drew up. And I'm trying to be realistic about this and provide enough time so that, you know, we're collecting pilot data for that couple of months that I think is necessary to, you know, really demonstrate that the thing works before we spend a bunch of money on it. And as you can see, that pushes us out into the December to April timeframe of next year for construction, which exceeds the November deadline. I think there's, there's two points I'd like to make in that regard. One, you know, we've done a number of these projects. Actually, we're doing an upgrade in Marshfield next door on their UV system right now, that has a September deadline. Because of equipment fabrication times, they're going to blow past the deadline. But we've spoken with EPA and Mast D E P, and they've agreed that because the town is underway with the contracts, they'll exercise enforcement discretion. So that's one conversation we could have as we're working through this. The other thing is, assuming that the chemical pilot is effective, quite honestly, the pilot equipment could be left in place going into the fall, and could be used as kind of a Band-Aid approach towards compliance until the, the permanent system comes online. So with that, open it up, do you guys have more questions, or did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd just add, just add two things. We had met earlier, earlier last year with the DEP and EPA, and met with them to go over everything that we had. If we present a, a plan in a course of action, they're going to be, they're going to be willing to work with us. They're not going to necessarily hold us. That's, that's what we left, leaving there. They, they would be willing to work with us. So we hope that that would still last. One of the other options we did look at, too, is we had suggestions by the North-South River to see if we could reuse this water, and maybe take the water and push it up towards one of our wells, say, off of, off one-twenty-three, and bring the water and try to use it to, to recharge. The big concern we had, we had Ian look at that, is because of all the I and I, we do have a lot of brine in the water. We're more, I know they do it in We're more, I know they do it in California and everything, but we're very concerned about contaminating our wells with brine, with the saltwater and having the salt going into that areas. Just a couple of the things we were thinking of. So, there was a ton of ideas. We looked at ideas. If we built a tank there, maybe we could hold it and only release the flows at high tide to get the dilution ratio. But the D E P, EPA really weren't gonna buy off on that. We even bought a book on plant studies. We were thinking of putting in some special plants and run it through before we went out to the mosquito ditch to try to absorb the copper. So, there's been a ton of study and work effort on this. So, I just didn't want you to think it was only two or three solutions we looked at. There was a lot of work on this. And Ty and Bond did a great job because originally, you know, we were looking at having to redo an outfall until we came up with this system. There was a ton of tests. Will and the guys at the plant, I can't tell you how many tests they took, and the water department grabbed samples they took. We really went, you know, overboard checking us out. And where we are, we're, you know, we're pleased with it.
What about chemical costs over, I mean, over a period of time? What's the monthly? I mean, I know it's probably not as, I mean...
Yeah. The chemical, the chemical costs, yeah, the chemical cost for this methcler product that we've honed in on wasn't too-too bad. You know, we essentially, I want to say it was like fifteen-hundred or two-thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
You probably spend more on methanol now for your D-Nite filter.
We might spend more on running pumps for an outfall solution.
Yeah.
With the electricity.
Can you turn on that light?
So, it's up to...
Wake up, John.
We just didn't know what to expect as far as...
Couple of questions yet. How much money, do we already allot some money for this? Is that just for Ty and Bond?
This past town meeting, I believe it was four-hundred thousand dollars. We allocated, we did allocate money towards this. We didn't have the results of the study before town meeting.
Is that six-hundred grand from the pilot to construction, soup to nuts? Is that engineering?
Yeah, so we're trying to include engineering and construction in that.
So, the pilot program itself is included in that, isn't it?
Yep.
How about pumping the water to the golf course?
That's one option we looked at. But, you know, we looked at weather. What do you do in the winter? It would also add another system at the plant because you would have to get rid of more, more of the bacteria. Or how has that worked out? We went through that solution.
Yep.
So, for reclaimed water, there'd be a whole separate permitting process we'd have to go through with D E P and EPA, and there would be new standards that we would have to meet for reclaimed water. Most likely, we would still have to address our metals issues, and we'd also have to deal with the salt content in the effluent, which is very high.
What's the ramifications of that chemical? Are we, you know, we're putting in however many gallons of whatever it is, that's gonna now go into the environment. Is there...
Yep. What's your average flow then lately?
About one-point-two million gallons per day.
So, yeah, I mean, we're adding a gallon or two of chemical to, you know, one-point-two million gallons per day.
But it's nominal.
It should be relatively low. I mean, the chemical itself is a, it's a NSF sixty-one certified chemical, which is a fancy way of saying that it's approved for use in drinking water systems. You know, and we're using it within the manufacturer's recommended dosing. So, we believe it to be safe. Part of this test, though, you know, again, is taking a larger view at how it performs when it's added to the existing processes at the plant. And Will and his guys do what we call quarterly toxicity testing. And, you know, it varies from plant to plant. I think you use the Flathead minnow?
Yep.
So, they get this minnow, and they put it in, I'm simplifying, but they put the minnow in a jar with plant water, and they put him in a jar with a control sample of water, and they see if he survives. And, you know, this is, this is kind of, you know, an opportunity to run the pilot while that quarterly test occurs so that we could make sure that we're doing no harm.
I don't want the metals job.
Yeah. The canary.
It's the canary. It's exactly what I was thinking.
So, we're not voting on anything tonight, are we?
So, this is good news, 'cause fourteen million versus six-hundred, if it works.
We had talked about that.
Pretty easy decision tree. So, we'll just have to see. How come you can't implement the pilot? Oh, you have May-July. Okay. So, if you have the board's blessing tonight, you can move forward with that full?
Yep, we'll go through that.
Full-scale pilot.
And maybe even before we do the full-scale pilot, I might reach out to D E P and EPA and ask for a meeting just to tell them what we're doing.
Yeah, that's great.
So that, you know, just be a trip into Boston for the day and give them all, give them the same thing that we just gave you guys and talk about it for a while.
So, are you looking for us to vote? What are we, what are we supposed to do?
It was just to bring everybody up to date and see where we were, because we knew it was a lot of money out there. We'll be coming forward in the future to get this awarded and stop doing the pilot study and everything else.
But we need to do that pretty soon, right away, right?
Exactly. But, you know, we want to get on and get everybody up to speed with what's going on. But we are, we are working on that.
Good.
So, I'm confused now, 'cause that says May to July, and we're already acknowledging we're gonna go blow past the November date. So, what do you need to bring back to the board before you can proceed?
We'll have to work out with Ty and Bond the cost for the pilot study.
Okay.
And then either reissue that as a change order or a secondary contract for the pilot study and continue on from there.
Okay.
And that's the next step that we'd have. But we want to do the presentation beforehand. Those numbers haven't been negotiated yet, but it's something we'll be working on. But we still have funds to keep, keep things moving.
Great, good.
Good solution.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing this, yeah.
Thanks for, I mean, definitely good.
Yeah, nice work.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. Nice work. If you guys can do a field study, ten-thousand dollars, you know, we'll talk to you about it.
We can, we can tell you how much a field study is.
Eleven?
That's how this works. Ian gets the credit for the good ideas. I get beat up.
At least we're consistent, Mike.
All right, Kevin. So, we have a discussion, a vote of the contract for the Caterpillar front-end loader.
Yes. So, we'll jump right into it. And basically, money was allocated for a new loader.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in. Money was allocated for a new loader. We've gone off the state bid list to purchase a new loader. We got a pretty good deal on it. Nine-thirty-eight for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars is a, is a good price. I believe the sticker on a nine-thirty is about three-ten. So, we were able to work out a pretty good deal for the nine-thirty-eight. Shaun, as I'm sure you could attest, if you went out to buy a nine-thirty-eight High Lift, you'd probably be looking three-sixty.
Why a High Lift, Kevin?
Like, we had a loader that we rent usually during the winter to handle it, and the guys wanted the High Lift loading the trucks with salt. They said with the boards on it, they needed to get a little higher lift.
Yeah, right. I thought a nine-thirty-eight was big enough. Will this be an I T so you can drop, you know, put attachments on it?
What it's gonna do, it's gonna have the Volvo connection on it, the Quick Connect on it, so we can use it at the transfer station also, because everything's plumbed for a Volvo at the transfer station.
But you're not getting any other attachments, forks, broom?
No, but we have a broom at the transfer station, and this has a plow included. So, we'll be able to...
For this price?
For that price.
So, we'll get a bucket and a plow?
Yes.
Great.
Motion?
Motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to purchase a 2017 Caterpillar nine-thirty-eight M High Lift loader from Southworth Milton for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Highway, transfer?
Highway.
Highway, okay.
Bless you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, next we have the M A P C roadway contracts.
So, what this is with the Mass Area Planning Council, we go out to bid as part of a consortium. This is for the allocation of the roadway management program, which is the grinding and paving, and it's also for the pavement markings with highway systems. And that's at state, that's at our unit prices that are established through the bid process through the whole South Shore. So, we get pretty competitive bids.
This is, T L Edwards is a great company. This is what they do. Wonderful to hear. When are they coming to Sichuan?
As soon as this, there'll be a phone call. We've already been talking to them, but they said we can't, we can't get you in the queue until we get the signed contracts. So, this is the first step in getting them out there.
So, we might not see them till the fall?
If you were going down, no, if you were going down New Driftway, Kent Street, you'd probably see some dig-safe marks out there from T L Edwards already. So, we're pushing and trying to get them in as soon as we can for that area.
Great.
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide supplies and services to Department of Public Works to roadway management and earth materials. T L Edwards, paving markings, is that?
Highway.
Highway systems.
Highway safety systems.
Safety systems.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahue. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Next, we have the discussion of vote of the construction of a satellite well at well number twenty-two.
So, this is well number twenty-two. Back about two years ago, we had a partial collapse in this well. We cleaned it out. We were able to get it going again, but we lost a lot of capacity. This is, we went to the D E P, we met with them, and got permitting to do a satellite well. We went out to bid for the satellite well. We had one bidder. But this is the price to basically do a well beside the well that would be able to get more flow out of and improve our water, our water ability.
Where's twenty-two, Kevin?
You got me a little late. It's off Chrissy Street, which I'm having a, I'm having a blank on.
Oh, by...
Off Three-Eight, off Old Forge. I'm sorry. I was having a...
One contractor bid, though, Kevin? Where'd we advertise?
Everywhere, Central Register. You know, it's, it's, every, everybody and his brother's doing water work right now after the drought. And we advertised in the Central Register and the papers, everything. It was all...
What exactly is this? Is this like a drilling company or...
They're a general contractor. What they'll do is they'll do the electrical work, the mechanical work, running the pipe over. They'll also make modifications to the building, and they have a drill. They hire a driller also.
So, this is essentially building a well right next to that well?
Yep.
Is this a lot to your well experience? Is this how much of a premium we're paying?
No, we're not paying a premium. It's in line where it was an open bid process. They didn't know there was, there weren't gonna be any other bidders. So, it was a competitive bid. When we had the bids reviewed, it was within the scope of what we were asking for. The results...
Do we have an engineer's estimate on it?
We do. It was Ty and Bond. I just let them leave. It was within the realm of where their engineer's estimate was.
Because, just 'cause they're the only one, they might just throw a high number at it, and if they get it, they get it. And guess what? They got it, you know? I just, I have no idea if this is a good number on a...
Well, he said if it's in the range of what Ty and Bond thought it should be.
And they didn't know they were the only...
And I've got a, I don't know if it was included in your package. It might not have been. But we had recommendations from Ty and Bond to award that contract to this general contractor. That's what they do as well.
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to construct a twelve-by-eighteen satellite well near the current location of existing well twenty-two to Barbado Construction Company Incorporated of Milton, excuse me, Middleborough, Massachusetts for two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-and-thirty-three dollars.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahue. Further discussion?
Question. Twelve-inch by eighteen?
I was just gonna ask that.
Kevin, what's...
It's only this big?
No, it's deep. That's the, that's the gravel pack they do. They have kind of a odd way of saying it. There were two types of well. The gravel pack is the best well. They redo the entire gravel pack with the water, and you get better results from that well.
But the size of the hole is only this big?
I'm seeing like a big well, just straight down.
It surprises you. It's big enough to fit, it's big enough to fit the pump, the pump in there. And we looked at prices, just to go back what Shaun was saying. We looked at prices. If we broke this out and did the, did the well drilling, you know, just the well drilling and did it in pieces, and it was, it was very similar to where the costs were here. It wasn't, it wasn't anything outrageous. If we got a price of five-hundred-thousand dollars, we wouldn't bring it back in.
How deep does it go?
No, it doesn't go to China. I...
Just got it.
From Alaska.
Do you remember how deep it goes?
The other one was ninety.
The other one was ninety, and I think we lost like twelve to fifteen feet when it collapsed.
Ninety feet, that's it?
That's it. So, this one, I believe, was, was at least a minimum ninety when it's all said and done.
So, do they put like a sheath in there or something? Is that, I mean...
They have stainless steel.
Twenty-four thousand, that's a great job to just bore a hole ninety feet down.
They must line it.
There's gotta be...
There's stainless steel. There's a stainless steel liner. You have to repack it with gravel. There's a lot more to it than you think. There's electrical work. There's a lot of electrical work. Then you have to run the pipe into the plant system, set up the, you have to set up the treatment for the addition of chemicals, and there's, there's quite a bit to it. It's not as simple as that.
Interesting. When you get a chance, can you take me to a well?
Yes.
All right, okay.
Gladly. Anybody that wants to go to a well will...
It's been a while since I've been to the one right across the street. But I did see that, I think Jimmy DeBarrows was working on it.
One of the things we're gonna be doing is redeveloping a couple of the wells. And what I can do is invite anybody out that would like to go and see the redevelopment. It's, it's interesting when you see it. This also includes a big pump that goes into the, into the hole, and there's, there's a lot to it. It's not as simple as just drilling a hole and, you're like, you got water.
Yeah, gusher.
Otherwise, everybody would be bidding on it if it was that easy.
All right. So, we got a vote in favor?
Show up for twelve hours. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of vote of an asphalt hand crew to hub construction. So...
Okay. So, this is, we've used hub construction for the past couple of years. Past three years, we were paying thirty-two-hundred dollars a day for the crew. The price came in at thirty-four-hundred. This is another one. We went out to bid. We did have one bidder. We sent it out to everybody, quite a few people. It was advertised in the paper, and put forward for a bid to match up with this. What they do is when the highway department has a lot of patchwork that's needed, sometimes we bring these guys out to supplement that crew. Or we might bring them out to patch water trenches or miscellaneous areas in town. So, the way this was set up to be a three-year contract, so we'd have them on call when we need them as backup for patching.
Definitely in the wrong business. Either gonna drill wells at thirty-four-fifty a day. I mean, that's for three guys.
How much was it before?
Is it for this...
It was thirty-two-hundred.
It was thirty-two-hundred.
Thirty-two-hundred.
But that's for the materials, too, or is it just...
We buy the, we buy the asphalt. They include the truck. They have the truck that picks it up. They get the roller. They get the jackhammers. They get the excavator to clean up the holes. They do more than...
So, that difference is just prevailing wage, then?
Prevailing wage is what you have. You've got a lot of prevailing wage.
I don't want to say too much, 'cause I'm gonna abstain from this one. But they're the ones that just did the most recent patch on Kent Street, and it's pretty good, so...
Makes you go slow, though. That's a good thing.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide a minimum three-man crew and all applicable equipment and tools to provide asphalt-hand crew services to hub construction of hull mass for three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars per day.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahue.
Kevin, is there a requirement of how much, how much work they actually do? This is just saying they're gonna provide three men for three grand. Do they have to do so many miles of road or something?
No, that's usually managed by Mike Breen on what he needs. He may supplement it with a couple of guys or, depending on what the crew size is. But he wouldn't call them in for one small hole and just say, "This is, this is it for the day." He'll line up multiple areas for them. Like, like when they were working on Kent Street, they came out and they did large sections and patched it up as they, as they went.
Any more, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Four-zero?
No.
Three. Three-zero.
It's getting late.
It is, yeah. Discussion and a vote, the contract for Creative Recreation for Playground Rubber Servicing?
So, this is for the playground up by the W P A. We've already come before you with two other contracts, one's for the... two other contracts, one's for the equipment and one's for the site work. In the end, it's all going to be a rubberized surface. So we were able to get this price. Recreation worked on getting this price through the state bid list, and was able to get these people in to line this up to finish that project off.
This was the cheapest part of the whole project.
Yep.
And the money's there from CPC, so...
The money's there from CPC, and it'll, it'll cap it all out.
So motion?
Motion? I'll move to award contract to Creative Recreation of West Hartford, Connecticut for sixty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents for the rubber safety surface for the north, for the new North Situate Playground.
Second?
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, I got a question for you. Painting, is there like a timetable for painting? Like, there's somebody talked to me about fire lanes and on, I think it's Harborview or something down towards the gas station. Is there a timetable for, well?
We just signed the contract for the guys that do the painting also, which is highway systems.
Okay.
I confirm with Mike when he has some scheduled. I'm not exactly sure when they're on the schedule, but he usually does it every spring.
Okay.
And we just renewed the contract, which hopefully is good for three years for those guys.
All right. Can you check just to see when Harbor Heights is on the thing? Guys talked to me, said it's been waiting three years, so I'd check into it for them. I'm not sure whether that's accurate.
I'll double-check. Is Harbor Heights a private way? It's a private way.
It's, it's down, I think there was something about near the gas station or, yeah.
Okay, we, we can take a look at it, because we come out sometimes and do spot painting. If there's something that needs to be painted, we could add that with the spot painting if we have a crosswalk or something that needs work.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think that's all for contracts. Anything else, sir?
All done, that's it.
Thank you.
Chairman, thanks. Thank you. Kevin, good luck Saturday.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, really. Okay, on the new business, we have a discussion of vote on some one-day liquor licenses.
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartenders for a graduation party to be held at Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, from six PM to eleven, till ten PM.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartenders for a meet and greet to be held at the end of Situate Harbor located at Seven Beaver Dan Road on Friday, June second, two thousand and seventeen, from seven PM to eleven PM.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With words like, "Vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartenders for a bridal shower to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Saturday, July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, from eleven AM until two PM."
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a few more.
Yep.
With words like, "Vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Reva for a wedding to be held at Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Sunday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, from six PM till ten PM."
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With words like, "Approve a one-day wine and malt license to Reva for a wedding to be held at Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Saturday, June tenth, two thousand and seventeen, from five PM till nine PM."
June tenth or twentieth?
June tenth, seventeen.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just on here, it says the twentieth, that's all.
On yours, it says the twentieth?
Oh, on the back up, yeah.
On the back up, yeah.
Which one is it?
You said six-ten, this says six-twenty on the...
It would probably be, it's on the application. So I would say it would be six-twenty.
Okay.
Six-twenty and six-ten.
Better approve six-ten, you have six-twenty. Six-ten is right around the corner.
All right. Well, we'll also approve, move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to Revas for a possible wedding to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on June twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, from five PM till nine PM.
It's a Tuesday.
Is it?
It's probably the tenth, right?
It's probably the tenth.
We have to do that.
Yeah, no, that's what, what covered.
Yeah, they're getting married twice. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
In case they don't show up for...
Option one and option two.
If you get cold feet on the tenth, you got another one. Move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to Reva for a wedding to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Friday, July seventh, two thousand and seventeen, from six PM until ten PM.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
And move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to hospital hostess to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on June third, two thousand and seventeen, from one PM until four PM.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I know. Okay, moving on to discussion of vote of, uh, two thousand and seventeen Harker Peddler and parking lot license renewals?
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen approve the Harker Peddler's license to Sal Shure Refreshments, LLC, doing business as Dell's Lemonade for the two thousand and seventeen season.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahy. All those in favor?
Aye.
And move the Board of Selectmen approve the parking lot license to the Davis Family Trust Davis Parking Lot for the two thousand and seventeen season.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahy.
Is that the one?
Amara.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Danahy. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And we are going to hold on the discussion, I mean, the vote and the discussion of the sister city appointments for Cork County until...
Selectman Currie?
June sixth, when Selectman Currie will be back from Ireland. Well, he should be back sooner than that, but I mean... Next, we have a discussion of vote on Situate Recreation Employee Disclosures.
And again, this is just teachers that coach or something?
Yeah.
Move the Board of Selectmen, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, have reviewed the disclosure forms from the following municipal employees who seek to provide personnel services to Situate Recreation. The exemption under Section 20B is approved for the following municipal employees: Andrew Barlow, Caitlin Corey, Aaron Colbert, Elizabeth Dorgan, Ryan Hurcom, Christine Kane, Amanda Kruegel, Kathleen McCarthy, Craig Parkins, and Matthew B. Poyer.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to other business. Do we have any correspondence?
We just have a few in here.
We do.
There's, we're looking for twelve families, again, as we mentioned earlier, for the Situate Sister City for Souci En Bree.
Name the Vignani household.
Yeah, you got a big house. And if you're interested, please, who should they contact?
Pat Jakar?
Jakar, or the Selectmen's office?
Yeah, they really, I mean, they need, I think, Pat said they need five more as of right now.
Okay.
So it's very important. If anybody could provide it.
Right. There's also a, a notice that the library will close from May thirteenth until June eleventh, as they are moving everything back to Branch Street. So it closes on Friday, May twelfth, at five PM.
Yeah, that's correct.
It is closed.
Yeah, it is. They're moving, they saw the trucks down there moving everything today.
And there's another, about an informal meeting that will be held on June sixth at six PM for the Hummer Rock Beach and Dune Nourishment and Road Elevation. Please join the town in public meeting, where John Ramsey, the coastal engineer, will discuss, this is one of several meetings that we have on this, but we'll discuss the progress. Again, June sixth at six PM at Emergency Operations Center.
You're doing a great job. I think you can be clerk when we reorganize.
You have to vote for me on Saturday. And then, motion to accept the minutes for May second, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
So we got it.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
And...
Other business, you have anything? John?
Um, what do I have for other business? No, I don't. Other than make sure, get out and vote Saturday, and that's it.